So I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. Today is Monday, April 20th. It is 5:03 PM. And you know, as is written on the agenda, this is by virtual teleconference only. If you would like to join the meeting, the last page of the agenda has instructions on how to join via Zoom, telephone, or computer. And if the city clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo? Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you very much. We'll first go to oral communications where members of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. Each speaker will have two minutes and Beth, if you could please help Mr. Page.
Mr. Page, it's your turn to speak. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thanks very much, City Council and staff. I am a part of a new Palo Alto environmental group called 350 Silicon Valley Palo Alto Team. And I wanted to commend City Manager Chikata and his staff, or who's ever been involved in the proposal about the budget to freeze spending on all non-essential travel. I'm not sure how much money is in the travel budget, which I believe it means money for airplane trips. But if it's more than $100,000, for example, then perhaps one FTE would not have to get laid off. Last week, the staff put forward an SCAP document and the council approved, which said that climate pollution, the climate pollution crisis is urgent. And if so, then I believe you'll vote to eliminate this pollution-causing airplane budget item, not just temporarily, but forever. You get less pollution, you get fewer layoffs. I'm recommending that you make this budget cut a permanent move, maneuver, whatever the right word is. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So we now return to our first item of business. This is a closed session conference with labor negotiators, representatives including the city manager pursuant to merit system rules and regulations, and employer organizations, including Umpapa SEIU, Local 521, Local 521 Hourly Unit, Palo Alto Police Officers Association, the Fire Chiefs Association, and IAFF, and the Palo Alto Police Managers Association. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on this first item?
No, we do not.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we go into closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. And if we will all please vote by voice. Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
I vote yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo? Sorry, Lydia, I couldn't hear you?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to nothing. We're going to go into closed session. Beth, how are we going to orchestrate this right now? Just going into closed session virtually?
Yes, and we will close the two attendees so that the only ones that will be in there will be those that are associated with this meeting. If there's anybody else from the group that needs to speak and has not been on yet, it will require a password for them to get in. So I think what you all are going to do is turn off your video and keep the voice going. And then you'll move into it and we'll close it off for the public. Okay, stop our video. Yes, only the speaker will have their video on.
Okay, and we just stay on this same Zoom meeting, correct?
Yes, you stay on this same Zoom meeting.
All right. I guess I'll see you all in a moment. So council has returned from our closed session and we do have a short report out. And right after this, we'll begin our normal meeting. So as everyone is well aware, the city and our community is entering a very serious budget season. To meet the challenges that face us, we will need participation and sacrifices from every part of our city community. We were recognized and want to thank all of our employees who do work for the city and all the fine work they do. With special appreciation to our essential workers. In the coming days and weeks, the city's labor relations team will be reaching out to all city labor organizations to invite and request labor to work actively with us as partners to explore alternatives and to find a way forward in these challenging times. Certainly a different situation and we can all work together on it. And with that, I would like to adjourn our special city council meeting, which began at 5:00 PM. I'm sorry for the delay. All right, it is 6:38 on Monday, April 20th. I'd like to convene the regular meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. If the clerk could please take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? Seven present.
Thank you very much. Okay, once again, this is a virtual meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. On the last page of our agenda are instructions on how to join this meeting and participate, whether that is via Zoom, on your computer, or by phone. The instructions are on the last page of the agenda. And with that, let's please move to our first special action item, an update and discussion of the COVID-19 health emergency.
All right, councilmembers, if you might bear with me for a second, let me see if I can do this share screen. Looks like that may be working. See, do you see my PowerPoint on your screen? Great. All right, so we've got a relatively brief update. We'll just cover a few items of review and in particular, give you a status report on some of the business support activities that we have ongoing, as well as look forward to the period that from an emergency services perspective, we call recovery. Although it's, as the ongoing emergency has evolved, certainly a very complex topic to take on. So first, simply in terms of review, to note that we've been focused in a number of areas, including ongoing essential services. We have as an organization also redeployed a number of city employees in order to address both shelter in place as well as priorities through the emergency period. We're continuing our evaluation and working with partners on a variety of scenarios and how we are proceeding through the emergency period. And also perhaps looking forward and perhaps optimistically looking forward to what the next phase might be. As I noted, it won't be like the light switch, as they say, and going back to normalcy. But a topic area in which we do expect a great deal of complexity and that we look forward to identifying a number of ways in which we can support the community's recovery. Then finally, later in your next item on this council agenda, we'll be tackling the next chapter in this ongoing story with respect to the city's fiscal situation and budget actions that will begin through tonight's transmittal of the budget document. So with that, let me turn it over to our Office of Emergency Services Chief, Ken Duker.
Thank you, Mr. Chikata. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council. I'll keep my comments topical and brief since you've been hearing from me quite a lot. Seems weekly these days. So our emergency operations center, like every city and jurisdiction in the Bay Area, remains activated. For those tracking it, the county's EOC has been activated for several weeks in advance of ours because they had some other operations that kept them going. So they never got a break. And we've been using the phrase marathon, not a sprint, quite a lot as we think about how to sustain our operations. And as Mr. Chikata said, how are we going to start a transition from what we're doing now to what we will be doing in the near future and in the midterm? Namely, the term of art is recovery. And recovery entails every aspect of our community. The business sector, of course, schools, nonprofits, faith-based organizations. Everybody has a strong desire to return to a sense of normalcy. We've been having routine calls with our Palo Alto Stanford System Corps Council. For those tracking that, that includes Stanford University, the hospital, Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and several other stakeholders. And we had a discussion this morning on the topic of interpreting the state of California, six points for eventual return to a world without all of these health orders and what might that mean? And in a way, misery loves company, I suppose. It was somewhat good and somewhat bad to hear that we're all in the same boat trying to figure out, well, what does that mean? There are a lot of things that no one entity and no one subject matter expert has control over. I won't go into too many details, but one of the big ones right now that's in the news cycle is the question of testing, in particular antibody testing. There's some research that's come out of Stanford School of Medicine. And there was a Harvard study that was released a couple of days ago. And I'll save you some reading right now. Nobody knows if the presence of antibodies means that you're conferred with any real immunity to the coronavirus or not. So that's rather fundamental and yet research will continue. And we're all going to try to figure out what does this mean? So for the short term, as the slides are indicating, we're following the guidance from the state and the county Public Health Department. Right now, every model that you look at, the only point of concurrence and agreement is that sheltering in place and minimizing your exposure is the best recipe to, of course, keep yourself protected from the virus. The cases are continuing to increase in the state of California. They're continuing to increase here in our area. But we are starting to see positive results. I just want to put the caveat out there to those listening tonight that that doesn't mean that we're anywhere close to out of the woods or that we have necessarily flattened the curve. And that means that we must continue to shelter in place. We're going to have to unfortunately do some hard contingency planning, not only about what the city manager and staff will talk about this evening with regard to the budgetary issues, but at the same time, we, the city, have ongoing public safety obligations to plan for emerging threats. That could include wildland fire, earthquake, major crime, and so forth. And at the same time, our hospitals are still bracing for what could be a so-called surge. The models, again, are ambiguous and subject to frankly, a lot of speculation. But with Stanford in our city and Palo Alto Medical Foundation and the VA Hospital, and a lot of other medical service providers, including skilled nursing facilities, we, the city government, and we in public safety are going to have an ongoing challenge to keep on top of not only the epidemiology, not only the serology and virology, but what exactly is this going to mean? We don't know right now if we're going to get hit by the wave as we sit here on the proverbial beach. Is it going to be more than one wave and when is it going to hit us? So that's kind of where we sit here tonight in bluntness and I'll do candor for you. So with that cheerful background, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Chikata. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So with that, let's see, I'd like to just note a quick update on a couple of dimensions of the business support work that the council referred to staff a few weeks ago. There, just a reminder, this is a slide that we used previously. There are two concurrent efforts that we have underway. One is, again, referrals from council, direct financial support options. And the other is building a recovery strategy related to convening of business roundtables. First, in terms of the small business support, we're tasked with looking at a few options in terms of the models that other cities have been using. And again, we're noting that the decision-making and decision-making criteria on that could be informed by the feedback we get on business roundtables. On the recovery strategy, we do have some additional information to share with the council. And so let me get to that. So we have put together a work plan related to a business roundtable that we believe should be serving the city well in terms of providing a forum through which to get direct feedback from businesses throughout town and identify some actionable next steps on behalf of the city. So first off, the approach that we are undertaking is to convene three to four roundtables of up to 20 participants each that will occur potentially starting this week. Councilmembers, as we had discussed previously, have given me a variety of names that could be invited to participate in the roundtables. And those actually totaled up over 80 to 100 individuals. So this construct of providing multiple opportunities for businesses, individual businesses, to provide some direct feedback to the city, we think should work really well. And then this will give us an opportunity and mechanism through which to hear directly both their concerns and the complexities of the challenges that they're facing, and in particular, what would be most helpful from the city in that regard. We have, let's see, a variety of names of businesses that were identified. And so I'll share those with the council as soon as we've organized those. It's a bit of a work in progress, but I think you will agree that it provides a good cross-section of the business community throughout the city. Our steps through this series of roundtables would be to develop actionable plans that could be taken on both immediate as well as potentially midterm. Our facilitator is gentleman by the name of Peter Coughlin of Saltes Consulting. He's a former partner of IDEO and brings the IDEO design process to this task that, once again, is uniquely Palo Alto in some ways. And again, really feels that will be the appropriate framework through which we can generate the feedback, organize it, and then help us put it into actionable steps. And thankfully, we have councilmembers Cormac and Niss that were identified by Mayor Fine as members of an ad hoc committee that have been in conversation with us as we get the ball rolling on this roundtable. Next, on the topic of the direct financial support to businesses, again, we were tasked with looking at the Mountain View model. So I'll just describe it briefly, that there have been a variety of different constructs used. But there are a few example criteria where the direct financial support through the cities that we've contacted and have followed up on their programs largely focused on brick and mortar storefronts, where no more than 25 to 50 employees are involved with the business enterprise, where there may have been a demonstrated loss due to COVID-19, as well as potentially having been deemed non-essential, so not currently open. And some have included or excluded nonprofits as a part of those programs. In terms of the pool, cities have been working with third parties, either nonprofit partners, community funds, or foundations. Or in the case of Oakland and Mountain View, with a third-party platform, also nonprofit used to be fiscal agent and administer portions of the funding program. As we talk about the opportunities here in Palo Alto and how the council might want to structure our own program, from a staff perspective, we believe that we could rationalize and put together a funding that would total about $500,000 upfront participation on behalf of the city and could be used either as seed funding or matching grant with other donors in which we might go after other private entities through a request to match the city's funds. And again, in terms of how the allocations could work, in terms of timing, could work well with the roundtable feedback if the council itself was not already predisposed to use specific criteria. Among the criteria that could be considered, and again, this is from examples of other cities, I should have noted earlier that Heather Dollar from our utilities department that also does our intergovernmental relations, did much of the research to this point and would be available for additional work and to respond to questions as we get into that. That, again, questions of only for-profit businesses or whether nonprofits could be considered as a part of this program. We would certainly recommend that this be done through a third party that is set up to either administer grants or I think a smaller market niche that would administer or is in the business of administering loans. Questions for the council to consider as to eligibility, whether it would be the size of the business enterprise, whether 25 employees, 50 employees, or some other number. Question of whether you'd want to establish some revenue cap that was used for eligibility for companies or businesses that could participate in a grant or loan program. And as was discussed at your last discussion here, whether tenure here in Palo Alto, how long the business has been in Palo Alto is one of the considerations. Now, I will note that virtually all of the programs we've seen have been administered on a first-come, first-served, where effectively, I suspect, all of the programs will have more requests for funding than funds available. So that would be a consideration. And then going into the question of amount, whether $5,000 or $10,000 is typical among the grant programs and whether there would be criteria associated with how the funds would be used and any documentation required in order to demonstrate how those funds were used. So again, some food for thought and certainly happy to get council member feedback this evening. And if we're positioned to be able to get a sense and being prepared to come back as soon as your next council meeting. Then just a couple of final slides to finish up my report. This, you've also seen before, just want to have it available to you in terms of a listing of other programs that are already ongoing to provide support to the business community. Won't go through these in detail. And then finally, just to note, as Ken Duker noted early on, we started the discussions with our community partners of how the governor's six key critical indicators or key indicators has been referred to that would be considerations as we, as a state, as a county, as a community are preparing for the resumption of civic life and how the six indicators ranging from our ability to monitor and protect our communities involving testing, whether it be symptomatic testing, which is happening today, to the ability to accommodate asymptomatic testing and surveillance testing, contact tracing for individuals identified as having been exposed or potentially testing positive for COVID-19, as well as the isolation and support for those who have been identified and tested. Questions of how that would be resourced, I think, is an ongoing question and discussion at the county, at the state level, and certainly among our community partners as well. How we could, as a community, again, prevent infection among those who are at greatest risk. The preparation of hospital and health systems to handle surges, as well as the therapeutics available to meet the demand. Our preparation and ongoing coordination with the Citizens Court Council, I think, really puts us in a unique position. And having those venues and that ongoing discussion as a part of the way that Palo Alto has approached our response to this emergency, I think is certainly an asset for us. Number five, our abilities and support of businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing, exactly what those rules will be as the shelter-in-place order is rolled back, are certainly questions. As I've mentioned previously, our own organization, the city was not required as an essential operation to abide by the county health officer's essential business protocols, social distancing protocols. But we've nonetheless implemented those ourselves as a voluntary measure in order to ensure that we were doing what we could, both for the protection of our employees as well as the public that our staff interact with. And so I can tell you that it's certainly been an educational process, a learning process, to implement those measures ourselves in our own operations. So we expect that businesses and nonprofit operations throughout the city will undergo the same process as we start to plan for rolling back and the reopening of civic life. And then finally, our ability to reinstitute measures such as shelter in place if it's necessary. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you, just close with our home-based messages in terms of messages we want to ensure that the county keeps in mind in every conversation, that we are very mindfully staying at home and minimizing and reducing our contacts, physical contacts through the measures we're taking, our communication channels as means of staying connected as a community and really appreciate the efforts throughout the community that have been ongoing. And finally, as the phrase, "this is not a sprint, it's a marathon", has become clear to us throughout the community, that our care for each other really being a critical bedrock that Palo Alto can look to our neighbors for. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chikata. Let's go to members of the public for oral communications on this item and then we'll come back to council. If I could ask the city clerk to please help our virtual guests give their comments and each of you two minutes.
For those members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. As soon as we see your hand, we will call on you to speak and you will have two minutes to speak. Lori Villarreal, go ahead.
Hello. I have a question regarding how did, how did you come to terms with what businesses were selected? Or how are you coming to terms with what businesses are selected for the roundtable? What criteria are you using to select the, I believe I heard, 20 businesses?
Mr. Mayor, it's your pleasure. We could perhaps respond after the speaker has concluded.
Or Ms. Villarreal, council isn't actually allowed to respond to public comments, but I'll have the city manager answer your question at the end of your time. If you have any other comments, please feel free to share.
No, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to sit at a table and kind of discuss how this impacts small business. And, you know, I do have two small businesses in the city of Palo Alto. And they're very different businesses, but they've been impacted quite a bit. They both had to close. So I think I'm just wanting to express my desire to be able to at least sit at the table or, you know, feel comfortable that somebody that is sitting at the table has a similar voice as mine. And I, like I said, I do appreciate the opportunity to have that you guys are listening and it's important. Obviously, you know that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Would you like me to respond now?
Yes, please.
I would love to get Ms. Villarreal's contact information. I believe our format does allow pretty broad participation. So I believe the council's interest at this point has been to involve business owners that represent a variety of both perspectives and nature of business. So if I could, I'll get Ms. Villarreal's contact information from the city clerk and be able to follow up with her.
John Schenk, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes. John Shank, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, John Shank with Boyd's Brothers. We have 17 retail tenants in the downtown. And I just wanted to share that I applaud the effort that's going into assembling a roundtable or roundtables, it sounds like. I do think getting information, which is so hard these days, it seems to change from day to day today, is critically important to help you all assess what it is the city can do to be helpful. I think there is, I'm certainly hearing a strong desire, it seems, to do something along the lines of grants or something financial. I also want to say and or encourage you to work with staff or encourage staff to look at other things, other than money that the city can be doing around fast-tracking permits, around helping retailers get signage approved more quickly than the many, many months or years that it can take. Zoning ordinance modification, things that can help our downtown recover, because it's going to be bad. And I think to the degree you all have really good information, it's going to be helpful. I think the budget is one that is, well, as it says in its cover letter, you know, it's optimistic. And I think there's going to be downward positions for the revenues. It'll be pretty constant, as I'm looking at lots of different businesses in our own. And I think that, you know, to be very conservative on that basis will prove wise. And I will stop there. I've got a few seconds left. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle Galfer, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes.
Thank you. So I'm speaking about an issue that I think impacts reopening Palo Alto. I'm not sure if this is the exact proper time to do it. I spoke to Greg Tanaka, and I am concerned about the employees in our essential stores right now and their safety. And I would like for our citizens to be required to wear masks. I looked at the OSHA rules, actually, and it looks like stores may have the right to tell citizens that. But it seems like issuing a public requirement that people wear masks in these essential stores would keep our workers safe and our community more safe. In addition, we're a really unique community in that most of our workers, I think, our hourly workers, may not live here. They may not be able to afford to live here, and we owe them that duty of safety. I know the county, I've heard from the county, the county is firm that they are not going to mandate masks. And I know the city probably wants to follow the county, but I think we should really think about worker safety. It's our duty. Thank you.
Mary J. Marcus, it's your turn. You have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. First of all, I hope we can continue remote access, because those of us with young kids and stuff, it's amazing to be able to be on the city council meeting without being there. I think it would add a lot more diversity to the meeting, so I hope you consider this. Following up on what Giselle said, I just wanted to urge city council and all of us to think about our lowest-income community members, especially those who are not getting any, you know, federal support or unemployment. And Gavin Newsom's plan for undocumented is pretty low. It's only for less than 5% that Palo Alto consider a fund. Other cities have done funds, Mountain View and Menlo Park, for low income. And I would urge it to be people who work here, not people who live here necessarily. I think we owe that to our wider community, because we have a lot of low income who work here, not just because it is quite expensive to live here now. Plus, we do have some low income still who live here. So I just want to urge you to consider a fund to support lowest income and not just focus on, okay, contracting city services, but how can we also help the most vulnerable in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Sincheck, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to echo, I guess it was Lori's statement before. As for, I have three restaurants in town. How could we actually be able to be on the committee or have some input on the committee that's going to address the small business concerns? So if there's a link or a contact avenue that we could work with to get, again, have our voices heard and have some input, I'd appreciate that as well. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, is there an email or portal we could share with some of these folks?
I'm hopeful that my name is on the screen. If so, it is ed.chicada@cityofpaloalto.org.
Thank you, Ed.
Mr. Mayor, that's all our speakers.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for everyone listening. And for those of you who did join us to share your comments, we really appreciate it. And doing an echo, one of the speakers said this is a new world, but we are getting to hear from a lot of different and diverse voices. So I think that's appropriate and promising. Okay, I want to bring it back to council at this point. I know normally the mayor speaks last. I've got a couple of comments I just want to go through first. So first of all, I think we're kind of getting into a bit of a rhythm here on these updates where, you know, on the one hand, we are looking at the public health issues and our responses there, and then increasingly on kind of business support and the economics in the short, medium, and long term. So I have a couple of questions and comments in both sections. So on the public health side, can staff just reiterate with us why we should not do our own testing like some other cities have done, or why we should? And maybe like in partnership with a Mountain View or Menlo Park or East Palo Alto? What's our thinking around that?
So let me take a first shot at that, and either Ken or others may want to chime in. We've spoken to staff at Hayward, as well as Fremont and other cities that have taken on direct testing to the public. And it's our understanding that the circumstances under which those were started are actually quite different from here in Santa Clara County in terms of really, I think, and I always really want to hesitate to characterize their motivation. And so at the same time, recognize that I think at the time, there was a need and a recognition of dramatic under-reporting, to the extent that that then affects community understanding of the need for social distancing. Here in Palo Alto, I do think we're in a different place, and certainly have been for some time, where the recognition of the need and value of social distancing has been pretty well understood. And while there are certainly some boundary cases, that in general, that issue has not been at the forefront. So the testing topic itself, as the council knows, has been an ongoing discussion with the Santa Clara County as well as with others, and recognizing the complexity of the system that is testing, whether it be from the availability of the swabs to the reagents, to lab capacity, the potential for competition among agencies that are seeking to do the testing ourselves, and really the question of how that all fits together in a public health strategy in terms of how that testing fits into the overall strategy to reduce the occurrence and the significance of the outbreak. So with all of that, we have, at this point, not concluded that we are, that it's right for us to be an active player. But we have initiated the conversation with county public health as to if there is a role for cities that we in Palo Alto are ready and interested in participating in any appropriate role. So that's kind of where we've left it. And so with that, let me ask Ken to chime in if I've missed anything.
No, I think you've pretty well covered. I think the other nuance is that we have a very large and as yet not maxed out test site right adjacent to us on Stanford campus. So the county public health plan would be first to direct more potential testees to that site before asking us to set up a geographically co-located site here. So as part of the county emergency operations center process, we're having regular phone calls with the county. County public health, of course, is represented at those calls. And to date, they have not expressed an articulated need for us to do testing in this part of the county. So we're also waiting to see if that does materialize. And if it does, it's most likely that we would co-locate with Stanford. So I hope that helps.
That does help a lot. Thank you. And I think one of the reasons I ask is I've been hearing from a lot of folks who say, you know, hey, Fremont and Hayward and other cities have their own sites set up, and why not Palo Alto? And I think you two gentlemen have really answered that question, why not? But as much as we can get that message out there to folks would be helpful. On that note, you mentioned that the testing facilities at Stanford. Another question I've heard repeatedly is, do our staff and especially our public safety personnel have access to testing? And the answer is yes, through the Stanford testing site. Our personnel, especially in fire, police, and emergency services, do have access to testing. So that is taken care of. Something else, a few people on the, in the public comment, mentioned about the requirement of masks. A few of us were on a call with the county last week, and the county emphasized a few things. One is they said, as the public health agency in the valley, in Santa Clara County, they should be the one to issue that order, and they had to be the best able to enact it and enforce it. But two, they would much rather see, you know, voluntary compliance with the guidelines that are out there from the CDC and other agencies. People are absolutely welcome, and in many cases encouraged, to use their own face coverings. The county, you know, will keep it open as an option, but as of right now, they are not requiring face masks. One question about sanitation stations. A few of the cities have set those up, and I'm wondering, do we see a need in Palo Alto for like hand-washing sanitation stations, things like that?
Yes, and in fact, we have established a few hygiene stations, really for hand-washing and for assistance of the unhoused residents of our city. So those have been an initiative that our community services department, Kristen O'Kane and team, have led in consultation with our nonprofit partners.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to business support. So the city manager roughly mentioned, and I should just mention for, to be totally clear, that we have started a business support ad hoc committee composed of council members, Cormac and Niss. That has to be announced publicly, so did want to say that. And to my colleagues, as we get into this longer phase of this crisis, you know, if you have other ideas or ways you think an ad hoc could be a service, please let me know. I'm happy to consider. This was a specific one the city manager and I discussed. Do we know about the CARES Act money and how that may affect city finances? I've heard a number of times that if we have expenses directly related to the health crisis, we can begin like tallying and invoicing that. What is that shaping up to look like?
Well, the, and anyone from staff may want to jump in, but from the information I'm aware of, the CARES Act really does not go directly to cities, with the exception of a community development block grant component that is just under $300,000. And so we're working through the process of making best use of those funds. So that's one. In addition, the primary allocations have been for cities over populations of 500,000 and for counties. And so we've been in communication with the county of Santa Clara. Not surprisingly, they're expecting their expenditures in response to the COVID-19 emergency to exceed the funds that the federal government will be providing. So it's not a situation in which there would be excess funds available through the county. And so our legislative push has really been in concert with other cities nationwide under 500,000 population to ensure that the federal government is aware of the significant needs that all communities are facing in response to the emergency.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'll just finish up before going to my colleagues on the idea of business support and potential grants or loans to businesses. As I think about this, some of the potential decision points. You know, in terms of eligibility, I think 25 is rather small. I think up to 50, you're still capturing a lot of small businesses in Palo Alto. And, you know, there are, you know, local restaurants or local serving businesses which employ, you know, up to 50 folks. And we may want to consider that. In terms of how the businesses have to use their money, my inclination is to allow the businesses to make that choice and let them use it in their best judgment and not necessarily require to go to something such as rents or payroll or prohibit it from any of those groups. I think, you know, for these businesses, part of the reason we're looking at this business support is, I guess, twofold. One is these businesses provide, you know, valuable services to our residents, whether it is a cobbler, a grocery store, a restaurant, you know, or a bar. Those are all important to our residents and their quality of life. On the other hand, these businesses, you know, produce tax and sales revenue for the city, which we're now in a deep pull-up. And so I think we should be looking at to use these funds to kind of, as much as they can, bridge the gap and keep as many businesses as possible alive through this crisis. I don't think $500,000 or in that ballpark is enough. But, you know, we're also need to be careful with the public resources we have. A few other criteria, just looking at, I don't think we should make this overly complex and put in too many requirements or report backs. I think that the point really is to infuse grants or loans quickly. I don't think tenure should matter. As I mentioned a week or two ago, you know, there are many long-time businesses in Palo Alto that people love. There are many short-term businesses in Palo Alto that people love. So that's just my opinion on those. And then in terms of third-party administration, what would that look like? Is that like the Mountain View model with the Los Alpes Community Fund? And is that, is that advisable? Is it faster? Is it just that they have more fluency in dispersing the funds? Why are people looking at that model?
I believe certainly that in terms of being in the business of administering grants in particular, I think that the loans are in Mountain View, I believe, and Heather Dollar may want to chime in, if I get this wrong, are actually being administered by an organization called Main Street Launch. And so set up a loan program through another entity, but that the grants, both in terms of the receipt of donations, as well as the disbursements of grants, is being handled by a community foundation. And I think that we found that that's a common model. And so with that, Heather, we want to redirect if necessary.
No, thank you. You're exactly right. And I think, Mayor, that the biggest reason for the third-party administrator is just because those entities have the bandwidth, they have the experience, they have the infrastructure already in place, so they are able to roll out the programs very quickly.
Okay. And I would just note that we have had some initial conversations with the Palo Alto Community Fund, and there is some interest in potentially working with the city on this effort.
Right. Thank you. And I'll just end with kind of three questions I'm thinking about as we think about this business support. One is, you know, how much can we afford, given our budget crunch at the city? You know, what is a reasonable amount of money to put towards this effort? Two, how do we augment it, whether it's with a community fund, with matching grants, with donations, things like that? And then third, you know, how do we target it, right? Is it business size? Is it some priorities, the first come, first served? I think those are all open questions. Okay, those are all my comments. I see hands from council member Niss and then Tanaka. I think you're on mute. There you go, Liz.
So let me start with something I think is very positive, and then I'll go on to something that's a little more controversial. So if any of you know Bruce G., Bruce is very active in our community. Also, in addition, is active with the community foundation, which we just referenced. And he asked me specifically today if I would pass all of this information on to you. Over the past three weeks, they have put, they put 500,000, half a million, into the community in a variety of ways. So this is, even he seems rather stunned by it. 180,000 of this went to Palo Alto Unified School District families. And we may not think of Palo Alto families being needy, but these were families who didn't have enough to eat. And so they gave them cards that would get them food at a variety of the local grocery stores. Secondly, they also delivered 8,000 meals to the boys and meals to the Boys and Girls Club in East Palo Alto in three weeks. So this is an astonishing amount of support that they've, they've given out in, in three weeks. And in, in particular, what he asked me to do is ask if he could have the support of the council. And I told him it would have to be agendized for that to happen, but that I could not believe that as a council, we wouldn't support the efforts that they have made in our community. And the reason he wants that in particular is he said other donors are very influenced when they realized a city has been supportive of what they're doing. So I'm looking to you, Ed, for continuation on that. We don't meet for another two weeks. But I would, I would doubt that anyone would object it, object to it if they were to say that the city was enthusiastically supporting what they're doing. So let me come, let me get the, this screen here. So let me go to the second thing because Ed and I don't exactly agree on testing. So could we go back to, could you find somehow in that mix, Beth, the slide that, that our city manager held up with the six steps on it that Newsom says we need to get to? Ed, do you have access to that quickly?
I do, I believe. So let's see, I need to share my screen again.
Great. So I would start with the first one and this is, this isn't just what you've heard here. You've heard it all weekend on TV. You've heard it for at least a week. The ability to monitor and protect our communities through testing, contract tracing, isolating and supporting those who are positive or exposed. Or as I heard over the weekend, what we need to be able to do is test, track and treat, which I thought was easy to remember. We have not done enough testing. We just simply haven't done enough testing. So I went through today, I talked to a couple of offices locally to find out where you could get. So I think any of you, you could take that down again so that I can kind of see who I'm talking to. Thank you. So if I look at all of you here tonight, I'll bet any one of you who wakes up with a sore throat and a cough or a fever in the morning, has a doctor, has somebody that they're going to call. There are a lot of people in our community who don't have that privilege. And even if they did, if they, if they wanted to start and kind of go down the peninsula. Ed, what, what I found out tonight, I talked to Gene McCowen on, on text just beforehand. And I don't believe that you can get a test at Stanford without going to the emergency. I'd be glad to be proven wrong, but I, I don't think so. So places that you could go, if you belong or you could, if you belong to the Stanford healthcare system, Kaiser, Sutter, you, you can go to those places and get tested. It's not a problem. There is also a clinic in, in the Mountain View from Planned Parenthood. I couldn't find out that the tests were widely used. Also, you can go to Valley Medical, San Jose, Milpitas and so forth, if you want to wait to get an appointment. And that means that you're going to go through their emergency room. There's one last program some of you may know about called Verily. And Verily is an experiment being done by Google at the county fairgrounds. Again, you need to sign up online for that. If you Google Verily, you will find out that you have to sign online and then you have to make an appointment. Almost all of these involve making an appointment. I'm an enthusiastic supporter of drive-through. And the ones that are drive-through, Kaiser does a very good job of that. I think Sutter is also doing that now, as I've heard. We need more testing. And I'm hearing from other city council members, especially at our end of the county, the north end of the county, that testing is very hard to come by. So as I said, Ed, we don't totally agree on this, but I think it's a very important area and it's one that I'm going to continue to work on with my fellow electeds because they're all very enthusiastic about this happening. So if someone has different, if you have a different take on this, or if you know something that I don't know, that would be very helpful. But right now, as you know, in either Hayward, Fremont, several other places now in the Bay Area that have started it, you can go, you can wait in line, you can be tested. And you will know within, according to the ones I've talked to, you'll know within 24 hours what your, what your test result was. So that's my concern for the night. I say this to you as a former health professional. I just know that we're not doing sufficient testing. And we actually should be testing people who do not have symptoms, especially if you're going to work at some place where, say a nursing home, you work in a grocery store, where you're going to be in close contact with people on a regular basis. So I know that's a soapbox talk, but it's one that I really feel strongly about. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. You know, I often tell people that council is a very group of non-experts, but I'll remind us all, Liz, Liz is the one medically trained of us seven. Next up is Councilmember Tanaka, and then I think I saw Councilmember Koo raising her hand, but if you guys can just hit the raise hand button in the Zoom app, that's helpful.
So I want to thank staff for moving forward on business assistance. I think it's really important. I continue to hear from businesses almost daily on the edge of going under. So I think it's really important to move forward on this quickly. I, I realize, you know, it's a difficult safe process, lots and lots of discussion, and then we probably act. But I think right now, a lot of people are trying to decide whether they're going to try to continue, stick it out or not. You know, while the, the federal government did put down a lot of money on the paycheck protection program and then, and also the SBA, EIDL. It, you might have heard, when the money like went out in like a week or less and a lot of people didn't get it. So I think there's a lot of people really hurting and they need help. And sooner we act, I think the better. I think rather than trying to be, come up with the perfect program, I think it's actually more important to come out the program quickly, quick, quicker than later because I think some people, they have to say, do they keep their employees? Do they lay them off? Do they, you know, file bankruptcy? There's a lot of decisions that people are trying to make right now. And every day that goes by is another business that's more than another, quite, quite few businesses are deciding not to continue. So I think, I think it's important. I agree with the mayor that I don't think 500K is enough. I, I realize our budgets are severely impacted, but I think this is the time for us to try to invest in our community. So I would, I would, I actually like to see more. And I do like the idea of matching. So I think that's, that's something that we should do to try to make our dollars go further. And, and if we have to do it by cutting other areas of the city, then I think we should. I also agree that I don't think tenure is the right metric. I was thinking about what would be the right kind of criteria. In my mind, I think, you know, the reason why we want to invest in caring businesses to come back is because they do pay sales tax, at least a lot of the brick and mortar ones do. And this could help the city revenue in the future. So perhaps one way to judge who to give it to would be kind of like the return on investment, right? How much more tax revenue with this business entity? If they survive in the city, be able to contribute back to the city. So that's maybe one way to think about of how, of how to make choices. You know, I, I know a lot of like commercial landlords also have a lot of their tenants, especially ones who have a lot of retail tenants have not got paid their rent, right? So I know a lot of them are kind of struggling as well, but I think the focus of small business, I think 15, another probably makes sense. Because a lot of restaurants, even though it may not look like a very big restaurant, actually have like 15 employees, even though it may be a very relatively small establishment. But I, I think the, the part that, and I liked, I really liked what John Chang said earlier, which is the other really important piece of this is, you know, are we going to have the political process to restart your business, right? How hard is it going to be? And I think, especially now, given that we don't have a lot of, you know, things are kind of shut down. I think it's really important to try to eliminate a lot of this red tape, right? I think use the staff hours to try to optimize the processes that we have, so there's not. I, I, from my own experience, I know that there's a lot of time that duplicate inspections have to happen or a lot of like, a lot of waiting that has to happen to make things happen. And I think right now we should, we should focus on how do we make it easier? How do we get as much of the red tape as possible? I know a lot of employees are kind of idle at home and perhaps this is things they could work on while they're not going outside to do inspections and stuff like that. Maybe there's ways that we could try to get our, our, our the ability to do business a lot easier. So people also kind of want to stay. It also doesn't cost us that much money and we have people who are idle anyway. So maybe we could, we could do that. I, I don't know whether we need another motion or whatnot, but I, for me, I, I think it's been about three, four weeks now since we, we made the motion for this, but I, I know Maldo has passed this a while back now and I'm, I'm really concerned that if we wait too long, it's, it's going to, it's going to matter less and less because people are making decisions right now as we speak. And so I don't know if the city manager has, has thoughts on this, but I, I, I know you're trying to move fast and moving lightning fast compared to what we usually do. But I, I just think we have to move faster because people aren't going to make it right now.
I'll, I'll just jump in. Let, let's get through this first round of like questions and comments and then go to motions. I should have stated that upfront. Sorry about that. Just one quick interjection on the Mountain View thing. One thing we've heard in some of our research, looking at other cities that offered money quickly, is it really went to first come, first served and it's already all been used up and it may not have been well spent. So.
Copy that model, but I'm just, I just know that speed is also important here as well. Anyways, I just, I don't know, I don't, oh, actually I wasn't proposing a motion or thinking about a motion, but I just was wondering from the city manager point of view, what would help you to move faster on this? I mean, you'll, you'll get feedback from all of us on this program. But I just, I kind of feel that people are really struggling right now and they need help like right now.
So depending on where the council discussion goes, if you have a sense that helps us come back to you with a specific proposal, then we can be prepared for your next meeting.
Yeah, maybe you could kind of incentivize it, come into a recommendation for us. I just don't think another two months is going to be good for people. Okay. So yeah, so those are my thoughts on the, on the business help. And I do appreciate that you guys are moving fast. Just, I think we have to move faster. I thought the speaker that called in earlier on the mask in retail stores, it seems to me, to me seems to make a lot of sense. I realize that the county kind of makes a call on this, but it seems like this is a good way to kind of prevent the spread. You're in a closed space and a lot of times you can't be six feet apart from people. So aisles sometimes aren't, aren't wide enough. Or maybe we need to make aisles one way or something so that we, we try to make it so that there's not as much, not as much close contact. And so I guess what's, what's from the city manager's point of view, what? I know that there's encouragement of it, right? But I know some cities actually have mandated this. And I was wondering from, from your perspective, why, why not? Why don't we do that as well? Because it seems like the right thing to do. It seems like we protect people. We have a lot of elderly people in our community. It seems like we protect them as well. A lot of the front, front and workers aren't paid a whole lot. And they're, you know, they're essentially essential workers at this point. So why not try to give more protection to the people that serve the community here?
Well, I think it's, well, perhaps just check the assumption and I'll ask Ken to weigh in on this as well, that the face coverings are really intended to protect others. So not necessarily, really not the wearer. So from a public agency perspective, quite frankly, for us, the question becomes whether a regulatory approach versus relying on both communication and public awareness is the better, better line to draw. And I think certainly it could be argued either way. And you know, certainly if the council chose to want to take more of a regulatory approach, then we would make that happen. I, I would expect that that becomes an enforcement issue similar to the debates that the council members have been hearing about gardeners. Good, bad, or what have you, that the city would then be in the middle of those debates, mask or sorry, face covering is not face covering. So I think that there's a question of where our best to, for the city to step in as a, as a regulator. So.
I don't think we want to devote our police resources to enforcing something like this, but to me, it does seem, make, seem to make sense. I mean, if you look at countries that have kept the curve relatively flat, like South Korea, it's regular practice where you go outside, you wear a mask, right? And what I'm talking about here is more like within enclosed space. So you know, we could get temperature of everyone else on this, but for me, it seems to make sense to kind of move this forward. And it's, and you know, if people just don't want to do it, I don't think we have to, you know, send our SWAT team on this, right? But, but I think if, if people hear that it's like strong encourage or perhaps mandated, even the, even if there's not strong enforcement, people will start, start doing it. So, but again, I'll let my colleagues speak on that and see what their thoughts are. Speaking of gardening, so I've gotten so much feedback on this and, and this one truly, like I realize it's county level, but it's truly bizarre on my, my point of view, because the gardener is out there by himself, raking up leaves, taking care of stuff, not necessarily interacting with the homeowner. Like I never interacted with my gardener. So I don't, I, I, it's, it's a bit of a puzzle why, why the gardeners are, are prevented from doing gardening, because I mean, I'm also thinking that there's probably sometimes fire hazards, especially as we go into summertime, there could be a spark and fires. Because people aren't raking up the leaves. I can imagine that a lot of elderly people would have a hard time doing their own gardening. So I guess, I realize this is kind of mandated on the county level, but what, you know, is, is, and I didn't study the county level thing very closely, but what can we do as a city to kind of loosen it up? Because I, I know that a lot of people, especially as you get in the summertime, if this thing continues, you know, we could have a, a fire issue as well.
Just a couple of points on that. First, safety issues and health issues are exempt. And so if there is any gardening or landscape work necessary in order to address those, that that's specifically called out. I think that the, the fundamental premise that we've heard repeatedly from county public health is this is all about reducing contacts. And while the gardener and property owner may not, excuse me, have a direct contact, gardener is going about their business. And so as a result, traveling, doing what they need to do to get their workforce appropriately mobilized. And it's really in order to reduce and minimize all activity that's not absolutely essential in order to get us through this emergency. Again, it's certainly been a policy call as to where that line is drawn. And we did do some follow-up questions as did other agencies that confirmed even having volunteers or have neighbors come by to do routine gardening is not acceptable under the public health order.
Well, I think some people don't realize that like if there's, there's a fire hazard or things like that, gardening is okay. So I think, I think maybe making more clear about that, maybe, and I know you guys are really great about doing your, your daily updates, right? Maybe that could be in there. So it's kind of clear as to when it's okay, when not okay. Because right now, like, I think it's not so clear. So, and then, you know, I've also hearing, been hearing from a lot of people, and I think several of the council members talked about this last time. And I, I realize you guys have a lot on your plate already. So this may be a little bit lower in priority, but of perhaps closing some of the streets, because people are trying to, you know, socially distance themselves. And so a lot of people, in fact, I just saw just before the council meeting started, I saw like people walking down the middle of the street to try to like, because sidewalks here are not that wide, at least in my neighborhood, they're not very wide. So people to avoid, you know, to be, to be more than six feet away from each other, they're actually literally walking down the middle of the street. And my, my street right now is pretty, pretty dead because it was sheltering a place, but I guess, I don't know whether we need anything, but I know that we have had, we have had like block parties and tasks where people put cones out and stuff like that. What's, what's to prevent people from doing something like that where, you know, they've given the fact that a lot of our streets, I'm not talking about the middle field or Bracadero or Rastodoro, anything that's like a main thoroughfare. But like some of our small residential streets, what's to stop people from essentially like doing that kind of stuff so that people can, you know, adequately socially distance themselves without, because you know, our parks are shut down now. We can't go to Foothill Park, right? So what do people actually say? Well, I, I see more people walking around my neighborhood than I've ever seen ever, right? And it's because there's nowhere else to go unless you walk around your own home in a circle or something. But so I, I just wonder like, can we? I don't, first of all, I, I guess maybe I'll, I'll love to hear your feedback and thoughts on this because I do know this has been brought up and a lot of people have expressed interest in this concept.
And definitely, our staff is still looking at that option. Certainly want to encourage and support people getting, getting out in their neighborhood. As you pointed out, our parking lots at the open space preserves are now closed. So the, we're, we're working through the issue and it's always this delicate balance and, and not creating a situation in which people are gathering. And again, once again, fundamentally relying on the county public health order to reduce contacts and do what we can. uh, do what we can within that context, while, uh, as it relates to streets, uh, the city attorney is, uh, constantly, uh, admonishing, uh, or reminding me of the boundaries at which, uh, we can, uh, undertake certain activities. So we're, we're working through the issues, and, uh, oh, city attorney may want to speak to this.
Thanks. I didn't necessarily need to speak, but I wanted to show my helpful. Yeah, I, I, we're, we're working through the issues. Um, there, there, there are legal and, and practical and operational issues, um, but there certainly are legal issues, so, so we're, we're working on it.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I, I mean, my observation with people in our city is that these people seem incredibly responsible. I don't see people like, maybe in the early days, but now people really make a concerted effort to keep six feet or more, like, ten feet or twelve feet apart, so, I, I think, given that we have a fairly responsible community and people are fairly well educated, I, I don't know whether we, um, I, I think we could probably trust the community more than we perhaps are right now. Okay, um, other, other quick thing is, I, I think Liz actually has a good point, and actually, that was actually on my list of stuff to ask the list, thank you for bringing that up. I do think that, if you look at places where they've been able to open up and keep the curve, um, down, um, they, they've done like a lot of testing, so I don't know if there's more that the city can do. Um, I heard all discussions, I'd like to bring that up again, but the second thing I want to bring up, and it's something that, uh, Liz called, uh, tracking work, what people call contact tracing, um, I think that's the other piece, um, and I know that we have a lot of employees who are idle, perhaps, and it's, and it's very, very laborious, you've got to like, you've got everywhere they, they've been, perhaps that's one way to utilize, um, utilize the people that can't work because, you know, certain facilities are closed, just so that we could, um, get good at this, and, you know, as things start opening up, we could make sure that we keep the, the, uh, uh, spread of, of COVID nineteen down. Um, but anyways, I, I do appreciate what Liz said, and I think, um, we should look into it more, more deeply, I think. Um, and then, Ed, you mentioned that, um, that, uh, you were advertising some of the papers, and I, I guess which paper, well, I, I tried to look at the thing, but which papers did you advertise in?
Uh, we've advertised in both the Palo Alto Online as well as the Palo Alto Daily Post.
I see, okay. Um, and then last thing is, um, paperbacks. I asked you about this last time. I think you guys were gonna send out a notice. I don't know if it actually went out or not.
Yeah, actually, let me ask either Megan or perhaps Brett, uh, Eggleston might speak to the follow-up that's happened, because, uh, we have, we have followed up based on the last discussion. And we're preparing a notice that was going to all retailers, uh, that made it clear to them that we're actively, uh, uh, pursuing or enforcing the requirement.
Hi, good evening. Megan Horgan Taylor, Chief Communications Officer. Yes, um, our public work staff did communicate to all of our grocery stores that this fee is no longer, um, going to be enforced.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Mr. Councilmember Shnaka?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Councilmember Koo, I think I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you. Um, I didn't see where the raise your hand on the screen is, which is why I just raised it physically, but, um, I wanted to ask, um, if the, um, testing that Councilmember Niss asked about, is it just drive up and wait in line, or do we have to call, is, do you have to call to make an appointment first? Because my understanding, when we're speaking at the Citizen Core Council, that it is still a need to call first and get an appointment before you go, so I just want to, have clarity.
That is, um, that, uh, the requirement to consult with a medical provider prior to testing is, uh, my understanding of how both Stanford and, uh, PAMP are operating their, uh, their testing procedures. I think, uh, the, uh, approach that Councilmember René has pointed out in Hayward and elsewhere is, uh, no medical consultation required, so, uh, individuals can drive up and be tested. They do need to have at least one of the common symptoms of, uh, uh, COVID nineteen in order to proceed with the testing.
So on that, you still need to have symptoms to go and ta, to get the appointment to test?
Correct.
I know Kaiser needs an appointment, um, so that was another, that was another reason I wanted to ask that. Um, also, re- regarding city employees doing contact testing, um, I, I wanted some, um, if you could help, um, some of the members in the public understand why it is that we can't just assign people to do contact testing.
Well, um, quite frankly, I think we're, we're still trying to understand exactly what would be involved with the activity of the contact testing. Uh, on its face, it would seem as though this is, again, based upon a positive test from an individual, which does introduce some issues of medical record privacy and how that information is then used in order to trace back and, and other, uh, people that they've been in contact with. So, uh, fundamentally, uh, this appears to be under the, really the jurisdiction of the county health department. So the question of how they would like to resource this activity is a query that we've, uh, asked of the County Emergency Operations Center, structure, so that, uh, they're aware also that we're interested, uh, certainly in supporting that effort. If it is with our own people, that would be one approach, uh, or any other, uh, can human resource that, uh, might be necessary and appropriate, uh, based on, again, the scope of duties involved.
Um, and also, um, thank you for that. I also wanted to, um, ask if there's any report maybe from community services about, um, um, what the county is doing in terms of the homeless and also the, um, vehicle dwellers? If there is a report, yeah.
Um, perhaps, uh, Kristin O'Kane could give a perspective. If not, I know our police chief might be able to as well.
Good evening. I'm Kristin O'Kane, Community Services. So I do not have an update on the vehicle dwellers. I know there's been, um, some interest in providing them some hygiene kits or face coverings, and I know we've been talking about that internally. Um, with respect to the county, we've really been having our nonprofit service providers, um, connect directly with the county for homeless, um, needs, and I also am aware that Rachel Tanner in planning is working with the county on the safe parking issue. So that's the only, um, update I have at this time, but I'd be happy to have someone else chime in as well.
Could Chief Johnson chime in with what he reported? Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. The, uh, I reported this afternoon about some of the update that we've been doing with the, um, RVs and complaints, and as I reported this afternoon, since shelter in place restrictions have been put on place, or, we have not had any complaints, uh, regarding RV dwellers, uh, that we've had to respond to, and we've been doing a count, especially the RVs on El Camino Avenue. And again, as I reported, uh, as of this weekend, we had twenty-seven, uh, RVs along El Camino, and that is down dramatically since early March where we counted sixty-seven. So again, it goes back to what we talked about either last week or the week before, is speculation, we believe a lot of these RVs have moved out of the area because they belong to people that were working in Palo Alto, uh, when work was available.
Thank you. Um, in, in respect to the, um, the, um, help to the local businesses that, uh, council is talking about, um, I, I actually think that the funds, it should be in the form of a, of a low-interest loan, and then forgivable, uh, if, uh, as we observe and, uh, follow to make sure that the businesses actually continue on with the business. So it's not like how, what happened with the airlines where they got a chunk of money, and then, you know, still, um, nothing is distributed to their employees. So we make sure that the business will continue its, uh, business here in town. And, um, of course, what Councilmember Tanaka said about making sure that there is a, uh, you know, to, um, prioritize businesses that does have a ROI that generates revenue, um, to the city also. Um, and the usage of the funds, um, I think, you know, priority is to ensure that they are supporting someone who is, uh, uh, dependent on the wage. Um, and I think that, um, landlords should be a part of ensuring that their tenants, they should be part of the solution to retain and preserve their tenants. Uh, and I am actually encouraged to hear when I'm speaking with some of the, uh, local small business and medium business owners, that they, there, there are a few landlords that are actually working with them and have been actually quite generous. You know, there's the spectrum, right? Um, so that's very encouraging to hear within the community. Um, I think, um, in terms of how many, um, employees, uh, I agree again, you know, um, you know, twenty-five is too little. I think maybe at fifty might be the place to be, but I would hope that you would speak with the Business Roundtable and get that number. And, um, encouraging that we ensure retail stays retail in the, in the location, because that's where the sales tax comes from and so forth. Then lastly, um, lastly, I just want to say today in our Citizen Core Council, uh, call, um, from Stanford's, uh, John Cohen, he wanted to make a reminder and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Chief Duker and, uh, Ed, that, um, there's coverage in the media that there are people who need, um, operations or some really, uh, high-risk health matters that if they need to go to the hospital, that they should be going to the hospital, uh, if it's an urgent case. So, uh, not to think that just because we are in this COVID nineteen, uh, timeframe, that, um, they do not take care of other health matters. And with that, I just want to say to staff, you know, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. Um, it's not an easy time, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. Um, just a quick time check, it's five minutes to eight. Um, this item was scheduled for until seven PM, so we're about an hour behind schedule. Um, next up, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, with an important item, I'll, I'll try to be quick. Um, so I just want to underline a few points that have been made, make a couple new points. Uh, importance of wearing masks, um, is, is being required in other parts of the country and parts of the state. You know, the county health meetings, they're strongly encouraging people to wear masks, so I think we need to keep just emphasizing that in our newsletters and communication. Um, and also, I support the comments about testing. You know, we should keep exploring and make sure that we're up to date. Uh, you know, we also need to make sure we're not impacting testing labs, uh, but we should offer it as soon as we can. Uh, the RV update was interesting today, um, and, you know, one thing I, I think we might want to consider is how, how can we gather some data, you know, during this period? You know, we have twenty-seven out of sixty-seven RVs that are still here, and it might be worthwhile trying to understand this population, which, you know, apparently has nowhere else to go, where perhaps the, uh, the other forty, you know, live somewhere else and were here for work. You know, in terms of the discussion about starting to, uh, return to more, more businesses or partial business reopen, you know, it is gonna be challenging. I think we're all gonna be impatient, and we gotta be very careful not to cause a second wave of infections. Um, and so I think as much as the city can help devise, you know, a set of rules for businesses to open, um, you know, allowing more businesses to do pickup or delivery other than just restaurants. Um, and individual contractors who maybe could be working, uh, one person at a time. And I do, you know, it's like talking to more and more people. You know, I think, I think it is a policy issue on the gardeners. I think if they're independent gardeners and there's an agreement, you know, that, that nobody is being in contact, that hopefully that's something we can start to enable pretty soon. Um, just some thoughts on the roundtable, I guess, for the ad hoc committee. Now, I guess as we're talking to these businesses, you know, it's important to set appropriate expectations. Um, and if you guys can bring back ideas on policies that would help businesses recover. You know, it's very difficult, and it's really, you know, what, what industries, what size of company, what can we do? You know, and I think the mayor said it, you know, I've been talking to some folks as well, and heard from multiple people that Mountain View wasn't necessarily happy with how their program actually worked out and how the money was deployed. Um, it does seem premature to me to say we'll contribute five hundred thousand out of the general fund. Um, you know, it's, on one hand, it's not enough, and on the other hand, it's a lot, you know, we're, we're gonna have a twenty million dollar shortfall just this quarter. Um, you know, loans add to the debt that a small business may be already incurring. Um, you know, I'm not particularly supportive of taxpayer money going to pay rent. Unless, like I said last week, if, uh, the landlord was offering some rent relief, um, maybe, maybe we can help encourage that. I do like the idea of trying to, uh, help keep employees on. I think one of the public speakers talked about, uh, lower income employees. I think these are all things that you guys should consider. You know, one other idea is to potentially look at funds to businesses to help them adapt to COVID nineteen. So if they need to buy masks and plexiglass and, and relay out their space, uh, maybe the money could go towards that. Uh, and it would do two things, it would help ensure, you know, their businesses are being safe, and it would defer some additional expense. Um, I agree with Councilmember Koo that it would, it'd be great if there's a way to get some assurances the business continue to be viable. Uh, I know that could be difficult, but maybe we should have some questions around that. And, um, you know, at the end of the day, I'm just, I'm just not sure how meaningful these resources would be if we just, uh, give them out as a grant or a loan. And, um, I think Councilmember Niss was talking about, uh, the food kitchens and the East Palo Alto meals. You know, every dollar is a dollar that takes away from city services, uh, potentially drives staff layoffs. It's, it's a dollar we can't use to support those people that are most in need. Um, so if there's a way to leverage that money, if we can organize donate, donations, um, you know, I think that's very worthwhile. Um, and I also think it'd be really great to identify some actions that the city could take that don't necessarily cost dollars. Um, one idea I've heard is allowing retailers and restaurants to use more public space on a temporary basis. Um, and so maybe they can leverage a public sidewalk to allow more social distancing. Maybe put more tables outside or have lines that extend outside. Um, I also think zoning actions that impact rent are probably our most impactful tool. You know, and the importance of our retail protection ordinance going forward in maintaining places for retail, I think it's gonna be critical. Yeah, I do think this, this one needs to be focused on business, but as our budgets get really pressed, that we are also gonna have to think about our most essential nonprofits and social services. Um, and, um, you know, I, I'm really interested to hear kind of how these roundtables work out, what the feedback is. You know, I, I do wonder, um, you know, if this money should be used for food banks and feeding people long-term. You know, I, I hope, I hope we get some really good ideas, and it's just a very complicated area, so, uh, appreciate you guys taking that on. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next is Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, so I'll go in order that, um, uh, first the, um, health emergency and then the, the business things. First on the health emergency, we've seen other jurisdictions put, um, homeless people into hotels. Um, is that anything that we're contemplating?
At this point, we have not. Uh, the county has taken the lead on that, and my understanding is that they have not identified any, uh, hotels, uh, that, that would be, uh, deployed here in North County.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll just say that the governor made some remarks about, um, communities who were unwelcoming to that, and I, I would hope that that would not be the case for us. Say that. Um, I just want to clarify earlier, there's a lot of discussion about Palo Alto Community Fund, super clear, Palo Alto Community Fund, full disclosure, used to be on the board. Um, and I do want to recognize that a hundred thousand dollars of that half million was donated by the Morgan Family Foundation. Um, so the philanthropic donations are really, um, what's driving the ability of that organization to be able to, um, support or, um, the organizations that are already delivering support. Um, many of them are in East Palo Alto, where of course the needs, um, of some of the families are much greater than, um, some of the families in our own, in our immediate community. Um, with respect to testing, I just think we gotta be super. With respect to testing, I just think we've got to be super clear. There's all kinds of tests, right? Whether you're testing, you know, for the presence of which of the molecules, whether or not you're doing the serology test, whether it's back in fifteen minutes, et cetera. Number of, you know, medical professionals who work, who live in this area out. Walking at very safe distances, Councilmember Tanaka, I often walk in the middle of the street with my dog. I always get out of the way. And it turns out that I was reassured to hear that. Rapid tests are available for just about anybody who comes to their regular appointments. And those results are available within fifteen minutes. I was consistent across. You know, I, I, I probably ran into three different doctors during that time, so that was reassuring to me as a member of the community that. The tests are available for our healthcare professionals to work with patients, even patients who don't have COVID nineteen. Everybody's read about the communities where everybody's getting tested. Those are primarily the ones I've read about, all funded by philanthropy, not by the city themselves. So that's another thing to keep in mind. Now shifting to the business part. I wonder, I just went back and looked at the, the report we had. It was only a month ago. It seems like an attorney ago, March twenty third. And Ms. Nosey, I, am I correct that we have two thousand nine hundred and twenty one businesses in Palo Alto? With fewer than fifty employees? That's the math I have on page four of the report that you provided on March twenty third. Yeah. Councilmember Phil Seth, yeah, see? Yeah, pink one, pink one.
You are correct in the sense that that report was looking at businesses that would be subject to a business tax. Also do know that excludes those that would have been exempt from a business tax.
Okay, so there are even more businesses than that. Okay. So if we all just do a little math together on the five hundred thousand dollar number that was thrown out. Even if we use the lower number, which is five thousand, that's only a hundred companies out of two thousand nine hundred twenty one or more. So that's worth reflecting on. I am loathe to have a lot of requirements. On the other hand, that seems a little bit like the proverbial drop in the bucket. So a couple of things I would think about. Another question I have, and perhaps this is from Ms. Dollar. The other organization, the other jurisdictions that have done this all restricted it to not to non-essential businesses. Restaurants are essential businesses, right? So do restaurants in those other jurisdictions qualify? I mean, many of them are still open.
Yes, they did qualify usually. And some, at least one city, to your point, Councilwoman. Stated that they wanted fewer than fifty employees. However, one city said if you're a restaurant, it doesn't matter your employee count.
Okay, super helpful. Thank you so much. We haven't talked a lot about nonprofits. We do have some nonprofits in this company, in this community that operate as a business. I'm going to use AIDAS Cafe as an example. Everyone will have their own personal favorite. So I would be loathe to have this just be for small business unless we think carefully about the nonprofits. That'll be an important part of us coming back. My personal preference is for grants over loans. I say that just based on, you know, pure basic economics. I think many of these organizations are not going to be able to pay back a loan. And, you know, the cash is usually, if you think about universal basic income for an individual, cash is the same, same value to a, to a business. If we do go with some sort of. Equivalent of first come, first served, I encourage us to think about how we monitor access to super popular things in the community with CSD. Which is we have a lottery, right? Everybody enters the lottery and gets a number, rather than people staying up until midnight or crashing the website or whatever. So you do the lottery first and then people can submit their applications. And then finally, just on, on like, why are we doing this? Why would we support small businesses? I've heard a lot of arguments for it will help our tax base. I think that's only one reason. There are a lot of services businesses that provide support to people in the community and. And those aren't necessarily providing sales tax to us because many of those services are not taxed. But I think those are important businesses also. So I just wanted to say that I, I'm not convinced that using whoever provides the most tax as a way to support small business. Is, is a criteria that I'd, I'd be interested in supporting. That's what I have on that topic and I'll wait for the, the motions in the next round.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Councilmember Phil Seth, I think you are last but not least.
Oh, yeah, so, well, most of, most of what I was going to say has been covered by Councilmembers DuBois and Cormac. I think particularly the notion of leverage and co-investing is. You know, if we're going to do something in this area, you know, making our, making our efforts go as far as they possibly can. I, you know, there's a lot of different kind of business in town. The hardest hit ones have been retail and restaurants. If you, if you cut the number, if you, if you limited just those kinds of establishments, you're talking about a lot fewer than. I think whether it was three thousand or a couple thousand, maybe a hundred or a hundred and fifty. So we might want to consider that bit, you know, as Councilmember DuBois said, you hate to pay landlords. You hate to, you know, invest in tech startups or something like this too. So that'd be something that's very community centered, if we're going to go this direction. But again, I think lots and lots of caveats have been already discussed.
Thank you so much. Okay, so just a quick reminder, this is a special action item. We don't have a meeting for two weeks now. But I guess staff could use some direction on what we'd like to do on this program. So I'm going to try out a motion that we proceed with a business support program. Starting in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Let me just get to the slide to see the. Details. Of grants. Including, well, we'll get to that in a second, up to fifty people. Third-party administration and seeking, you know, matching dollars donors or, or leverages, as Councilmember Phil Seth mentioned.
I'm seconding it if you can hear.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Two areas I'd love to hear y'all's feedback on. So one is what Councilmember Phil Seth just mentioned, focusing it on restaurants and retail. And the other piece is what Councilmember Cormac mentioned, the nonprofits. Do we include them in the same program? So right now, what I've put forward is grants, up to fifty employees, third-party administration. And finding leverage or matching funds. So I, I, I think, you know, Councilmember Tanaka talked about urgency here. I think it is very important. We've all touched on different reasons why our businesses are so important to our community. Whether it is tax revenue, whether it is services, whether it's groceries, or whether it is just not having boarded up stores along University or Calav or Midtown. Businesses are an important part of our community and right now they are really hurting, so I think we do need to put some effort behind that. I think this is a starting point. So, Councilmember Niss, Molly?
Yes, if I could make one comment, please. So procedurally, what you need to do here is direction to staff to come back. Because the item is noticed to the public as a general update and so there isn't. It's not ripe for the council to actually take action to adopt a program tonight.
Thank you. So let's make it, you know, direct staff to come back with a program, given these, these parameters. Thank you. Councilmember Niss, do you want to speak to your second?
Yes, briefly. I've supported business for a long time, especially small business, because I think it really, it, it really colors your community. People feel very strongly about businesses that are in their particular area. And, oh, thank you. And I think that there are some businesses that we will just be heartbroken if they go away. And I think they're different for every one of us. Some of us, you know, really gravitate toward maybe the downtown, some toward California Avenue. You know, Midtown has a, a group that. Literally support almost every one of the businesses that's there, that's, I think, so impressive. And Charleston has its supporters and so forth. I, I think regardless of who we end up supporting, we're going to support somebody who makes an enormous difference to the community. I think the one thing that wasn't listed here is Allison mentioned a lottery. Which I thought was interesting and I hope while. Staff is exploring this, that they look at that idea as one that may cut down on that feeling of. Anxiety about getting there first. So I, I would add that to it, but, but. You know, certainly strongly support us being able to, to support our small businesses. As, as well as we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. The, the other area I didn't touch on was actually the amounts of the business. Personally, I think five thousand is probably more reasonable, but I'll, I'll leave that open for now. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, you know, one thing we heard, and we heard it from John Sheng tonight. That he, he mentioned that would really help, and I don't think it's going to cost us a lot of money, and I think it's, it's a good time now because we have, we have downtime. Is can we get rid of some of the red tape or can we streamline the process so that it's easier for people to reopen? It's not going to cost us a lot of money and I think it'll. It'll enable people to get running again faster. So I don't know if we have to make this part of the motion or whether, if we just do that, but. This, to me, it seems, to me, it seems to make sense if we're trying to enable people to stay in business.
So I, I think that's. You know, you, you're absolutely welcome to make this part of the motion, but if the city manager can maybe answer, is, is that somewhat also the role of the Business Roundtable?
Exactly, that's, that I suspect may be a better place for it. As I would expect, we're going to have a whole set of recommendations that will come back from the roundtables in such a way. That will allow us to give you a, a full set of recommendations rather than take just one or two at a time. Especially given that, you know, an issue is signage, such a signage as the council knows, has a number of dimensions to it. And so it'd be better to, to let us come back to you with a more specific recommendation.
That's fine. The, the second thing I, I was thinking about is. I know the mayor spoke about perhaps more money than this five hundred K. I guess, why not? Like, five hundred K is not a lot. Why not do a million? Why not try to? Because there's, there's quite a few businesses here, quite a few people need help. And so, why not go for more than, I, I guess, the mayor made the motion, so I'm just curious to get your, your take on it. Because I actually, I, I didn't think about that, but when you mentioned, I thought that was a good idea.
So I, I, I think this is a start. I'm, I'm not averse to, you know, putting more funding towards this. But the, the why not is, is, you know, the very next item that we have, right? Where we are currently facing a twenty million dollar deficit this year and next year up to forty million dollars, if not more. So, so that's the why not. And, and we can, we can certainly, if we see success here or more need, like we can certainly allocate more resources to this, you know, later in, in the spring or summer.
Yeah, I, I think for me, the most important thing is getting some, something going, learn from it and try to make it better.
Sure, but then, I mean, we're just going to be cutting other stuff in the budget, right? And it's not. You know, I mean, something's got to give and.
No, I guess my point was more that, more is to get something going rather than something perfect, right? Because I think time matters here.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's half a million dollars. It's a start. We can put, you know, more money towards it later if we need, is my, my thought. Next is Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I'm a little surprised by this motion. It feels very premature to me and. You know, Ms. Leonard's good, I thought we were having a discussion on the scope of the Business Ad Hoc Committee. I thought the whole purpose of that ad hoc was for them to figure out a lot of these parameters. So, you know, I, I want to, I support our local businesses. I, I want to start this program. But, you know, this motion is making a lot of decisions and asking staff to come back. You know, I, I would think some of these parameters, like whether, whether it's a grant or a loan, what the size of the company is. What types of businesses? You know, it's, it's not really clear to me that restaurants are our top priority. And I, I thought that was part of the purpose of the Business Roundtable. There's a lot of businesses that are completely closed right now. You know, we haven't, we haven't really heard from them, other than us individually walking around and talking to them. You know, it says retail, you know, what about service businesses? And I would also feel a lot better if it was structured to say that the city would match, you know, dollars up to X amount. So, you know, I don't know if the maker would be open to really changing this to be direction to staff in the ad hoc committee. You know, to explore these things and come back as soon as possible. But it, it does seem very premature to say that this is the conclusion.
So I, a couple of things. So those last two items, first of all, those are for discussion. Those were just ideas I had heard and I, I wanted to hear everyone's feedback on them. I'm not totally decided on those last two dashes. In terms of, you know, working in parallel with the ad hoc and the Business Roundtable. I think this, this product and this program can certainly be informed by that, but there, there is some urgency here. That we actually need to get, you know, some. Effort out there for businesses and I think this will certainly be shaped by that, by, by the roundtable. But, you know, we're setting a high level policy goal of half a million dollars, you know. Up to fifty employees administered by a third-party group. And in, sorry, in terms of your last question about matching funds, I think, I think that's in here, but.
I mean, I would, I would structure it that way. I mean, this says it would be grants and that will. Try to find leverage. I would say like the city commits up to five hundred thousand dollars of matching funds. But, so what, what is the purpose of the ad hoc committee that? I mean, I thought the purpose was to structure this program.
No, so the ad hoc committee is largely in support of, of staff and the city manager and the Business Roundtable, right? The Business Roundtable is going to be a series of meetings with dozens of Palo Alto businesses and kind of. Coaling and distilling their feedback to the city manager and to city council is the role of the ad hoc.
So if they come back and say. You know, all of the psychologists are going out of business. And they weren't part of this motion, what are we going to do?
We may have to address that and I, I don't think we can boil the ocean tonight. So I mean, like, that, that's kind of my answer along those lines. I think if we go send this to the business app, to the, to the Business Roundtable. I'm not sure we're going to see a work product for months on end. And a program here.
Well, I, I hear that. I just, again, it seems. Still seems very undefined and, and I thought the purpose was to use the roundtable to try to identify needs. You know, as, if we add more things, I, I do think we should maybe split some of these things out. I, I feel pretty strongly that we need to focus on nonprofits separately. I don't really want to see our nonprofits competing for these dollars. And again, I think if we go out to raise matching funds and things, I think it'll be a very different kind of activity. And again, so I, I think, I think we need to consider services and, you know, I guess I would offer a friendly motion that we would. You know, strengthen the language about, you know, structuring this as a matching program.
I, I don't know exactly what you mean. I mean, it says five hundred thousand dollars for grants and go seek leverage and, and matching funds. I'm not sure what, what exactly you're proposing, that we only give a grant if there's matching funds for it?
Yes, it's a way to encourage donations that the city will contribute up to five hundred thousand dollars in matching funds.
Does staff have a perspective on that?
Well, I think if that were the motion, our next stop would be to. Get the word out that that's what the city is, is looking toward. And again, we are in preliminary discussions with a, a partner, whether it be the Palo Alto Community Fund or other. In order to ensure that that is something that they'd be able to help us with.
So, Tom, on that one, like, I, I'm interested, but I'd want to see your counselist, so I'm going to take it as an unfriendly and let's see if you've got support for that, okay?
Sure.
Is there a second to make this a fully matching program? Councilmember Phil Seth, thank you. Okay, so there's a unfriendly amendment to make this five hundred thousand dollars of grants requiring a match. And Councilmember Phil Seth, do you want to speak to that quickly?
One quick thought, if I could just speak. Again, I, I, what I'm mostly interested in is keeping some of these parameters more flexible, so that if staff comes back. But I do think the message of matching funds is a great one to put out in the community right now. And I'd be open to like some flexibility where staff could come back if they say they can't find the funds, but I actually think they will.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yeah, I think, I, I'm really concerned about the drop in the bucket issue. Very, very worried about the next discussion that we're going to have. It seems pretty much in Congress. Throwing around money right now, you know, we're going to have a massive shortfall coming up next year, everybody knows.
Yep.
And. I think to the extent it's leveraged, you know, I think, you know, okay, that's uh that that's that 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 makes our money go further. You know, that that's a big factor for me. It's just us passing out money to, you know, first come, first served, and we're not really sure, and we're in a big rush. And, you know, Mountain View has that experience with. I think, I I think we need more discipline.
Okay, so that is still on the table as an amendment. Um, I'm going to go to the next hand I saw, which was Councilmember Cormac. Um, and also, I'd love to hear from folks on, is it restaurants, retail, service businesses, nonprofits?
Are we voting on the amendment first, though?
Yeah, do you want to?
Do you want to speak to it, Councilmember Cormac? I saw your hand.
No, I because I wanted to speak to the main motion. Do you want me to just confine my remarks to the amendment now?
Sure, let's do that quickly. If you have comments on the amendment, please go to those, and then uh I'll see if anybody else wants to speak on that. Thank you.
I appreciate the spirit of the amendment. And another time, I might be supportive. Um, but I don't think I'll be supporting it for two reasons. One, I actually think with the vast needs. In our community, in our neighboring communities around the world. That supporting businesses in Palo Alto might not draw as much philanthropic money as other other needs. I'm I'm, it's just hard for me, perhaps I just don't know who would give money to small businesses in Palo Alto. When there are other, there are literally people, as we discussed earlier, you know, in our community and in neighboring communities who don't have enough food for today. Um, so I'm not sure that it would really succeed. Um, I am concerned about the sheer dollar amount. I don't know if it's the right dollar amount. Um, I think the main motion. We'll come back to, but I I'm just not sure that the matching funds will be there um on this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this amendment, or should we just vote on it? Councilmember Ku.
I just have a question. Um, so the matching funds, is that only if we get the matching funds? Or I wasn't quite sure on the um language. Is it only when we get the matching funds, then we will distribute and? Is that, is that what you were going with?
We can distribute, I guess, as it matches, but the idea is the city contributes as as donations are made.
Right, if we get a hundred thousand dollars of of grant money from another source, we can disburse a hundred thousand dollars of city money.
I see, I see, okay.
Um, okay, uh, let's just go through and vote on this amendment, and then we'll come back to the main motion. Councilmember Cormac. Council Vice Mayor DuBois.
Better be yes, yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth? Um, I'm going to vote yes. Uh, Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Ku? Councilmember Tanaka? Okay, um, so that fails on a four to three vote, but thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for the suggestion. I think staff does get the message, like, where we can see leverage or matching funds, we should. Mr. Vice Mayor, I think it returns to you and then Councilmember Cormac on the main motion.
Yeah, I think I made the rest of my comments, like, I I um. I would leave it up to staff, I guess, to figure out the types of retail businesses and retail-like services. Um, and again, I I really feel like nonprofits is mixing apples and oranges here, and that we need to really focus on those separately.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. The sheer dollar number, I just don't know. I will be supporting this main motion this evening. But it's not clear um that I will support the program when it comes back, depending on the um. Uh, details of that. Um, with up to fifty employees, um, one moment. Sorry about that. Um. Fifty employees, we've already discussed that. Third-party administration, I agree. Um, leverage and matching funds is appropriate. Um, I'm not interested in limiting it to restaurants and retailers, um, not just because of the services argument, but because there are other. Um, businesses, you know, just looking through again all the different categories of businesses. I think we would miss um businesses that are shut, um, who could really benefit from this. And if we're not going to address nonprofits tonight, I'd like to know when that's going to happen. So. Um, that's where I am on the main motion. I'm willing to support it tonight. But the details that come back in two weeks or whenever will determine whether or not I support it at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do we have any, like, even sketches on what we may be looking at for the the nonprofit sector? And our partners there?
Well, um, as the council knows, we actually have an ongoing series of grants. And and relationships with nonprofits that range from one dollar a year leases. To actual hard grants, including uh the Community Development Block Grant Program. That will be coming back to the council, I believe, in next month in May. So those those are existing foundations upon which to talk about any additional funding. Uh, so I think the question for the council would be, what dollar amount, what might the goals be of such a. A program and how to structure uh something uh along those lines. So in terms of if the expectation is to match what we're doing with the business community. Then we would need to look at the trade-offs and and come back to you with some uh observations on that.
Okay, and and maybe there's also a role for us as we look at CDBG and CARES money. Um, how we might disburse those in in a similar fashion or to some more effect.
Just a quick question on that. Um, the city manager, didn't did Stanford already contribute like two hundred thousand dollars? And then you said there's a a three hundred thousand dollar additional CDBG grant coming?
Uh, yes, that is through the CARES Act, uh, that will be um. Programmed through CDBG, and so that is uh currently with staff, we're evaluating some options. To bring forward to the Finance Committee and Council.
And then Stanford, did they also make some donations recently?
I don't know the particulars of that, so others may want to comment if you're more familiar.
I think on the CCC meetings, uh, Gene has talked about it.
Actually, I'm not sure if Gene was referring to the Stanford or PACF.
I think it's PACF.
The Palo Alto Community Fund, of which she's a board member.
Okay, um, let's go back to the main motion. Um, if anyone else has any other comments, please hit your hand. Uh, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks, uh, just real briefly, uh, so, uh, I'll probably vote for this tonight. Uh, I'm with Councilmember Cormac. I'm very divided on it, and I'd see what comes back in a couple of weeks. I may vote against it in a couple of weeks, but. Um, one thing we didn't talk about, and I'm not going to suggest this is a motion, but I think staff ought to consider it. You might consider a minimum size on some of these businesses. So according to the the pink book. Uh, we've got two thousand businesses in town that have less than five people. Huge number of those, I think, are single, are people working out at our house and stuff like that. A third of them are professional scientific and technical services and so forth, and I think that's probably not the real target for what we're trying to achieve. So I think we ought to, we ought to consider sort of, there might be a minimum size as well.
That's a really a cogent comment, actually, as as you mentioned that, Councilmember. I'm thinking it's almost like we want businesses with storefronts, right? Is maybe one of the ways we're thinking about it.
The the drop in the bucket factor is, how do you make sure you get the biggest bang for what you're trying to do here?
Yeah, good point. Um, Vice Mayor, see your hand up on Zoom?
No, sorry, it's the comments on the charity one, the nonprofit.
All right, um, let's vote on this motion, and then hopefully maybe take a quick break and then move on to the next item. Uh, so Councilmember Cormac. Vice Mayor DuBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Okay, dragging you along. Um, I vote yes. Uh, Councilmember Niss?
I'm a yes.
Councilmember Ku? And Councilmember Tanaka? Thank you. Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Staff will return at a future date. And as many of my colleagues have noted, we will evaluate and consider the program again. Okay, thank you all on that. Are there any last comments on this COVID item from council or staff? No? Okay, I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute break till eight forty. And then we will move on to our study session on the city manager's proposed FY twenty 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 twenty-one budget. Um, and if you would please mute and turn off your videos, and I'll see you all in ten minutes or so. Thank you.
Want to make sure before.
Let us reconvene. It's eight forty three. Thank everyone for being right on time. So our next item is a study session presentation of the city managers proposed fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one budget. For those following along the agenda, there's a transmittal letter and then links to the two budget documents. Mister City Manager, do you want to kick us off?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let's see if I can get this rolling. All right, hopefully you're able to see my screen with the presentation. I'll spend a few minutes walking through this and perhaps just by way of preface. I think it's appropriate to have this discussion following the really detailed and appropriately. So discussion that the council just had with respect to the COVID nineteen emergency. As the council knows, when we initially started organizing around our response to the emergency, we. Very intentionally described our response in two phases. The first being getting through the emergency and the second phase really recognizing the importance of tackling structural. Fiscal impacts that would be clear post the emergency shelter in place period. Well, tonight we began that second chapter and really would like to spend a few minutes. Walking through the implications of the transmittal letter that the council and community has received. As well as some of the the numbers behind it. So just by way of process, let me acknowledge that in our letter, we point to some of the. Possible changes and in particular service impacts. That we expect we will need to consider and to large measure implement as a part of ensuring that the. City has a balanced fiscal budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And also recognize that this has potential impacts not only to our community, but to our workforce as well. And so it's really recognizing the seriousness of the issues we're tackling that. Kicks off this chapter. So with that, the process ahead involves tonight. As the city manager's proposed budget is released transmitted to the city council. As directed by our charter and municipal code process, we've got both our operating budget. Which handles our day to day expenses for the upcoming year that begins July first to June thirtieth of the year twenty twenty one. Along with our capital budget, which includes all of our construction projects and other capital outlays. Which includes a five year capital improvement plan, but for which the first year is an actual budget appropriation. We've got a number of moving parts, so to speak, as it relates to forecasts. Of estimated revenue reflecting the current public health emergency as well as the upcoming process. Through May and June that I'll speak to in a little more detail and that we have ahead of us a pretty intensive. Two month process through which to work through the. Information, the. Evaluation of options and ultimately culminating in the adoption by the council of a budget for the fiscal year. So I've got a few pie charts that I'll just highlight some of the major sections too. So this is first. The overall sources of funds and this includes all funds. Some of our discussion tonight will focus on the general fund. But the reality is, as the council knows, our taxpayers pay all costs associated with the city. So whether it be. Utilities expenses or other fees that are associated with specific applications that. These are all the same taxpayers and so the city's approach has to and does recognize. That as the community is struggling with its financial resources. That the city also needs to reflect that. So the largest slice here being net sales, which are largely utility. Pass through expenses and associated transactions. And other revenues as as described and again, we can speak to that in a little more specificity. But this just gives you the overall picture of how general fund revenues, which I'll describe in a little more detail. Relate to the overall revenues for the city. So that said, then the uses of funds or how the revenue is spent. Is in large measure, as you see, driven by a few major categories of expenses. The largest being our capital improvement program, more than thirty percent of our annual budget is spent on. Construction projects as the case may be or other capital outlay. Next are just almost thirty percent for salary salary and benefits. We are a service organization and so a large component of our expenses relate to salaries and benefits. And the lower right segment that sector there shown for utility purchases. Representing about twenty percent of our expenses. Let's see, your budget that you received does include a number of elements that are as. You might refer to woefully out of date in that they were prepared more than a month ago in terms of forecasts and estimates. And so as we work through this upcoming two months effectively. Will be working through a number of dimensions. So first, as noted. In our current fiscal year and getting through this emergency period, we've estimated a fifteen to twenty million dollar. Impact to the current year budget that that reflecting. The ongoing expenses for the emergency period, the anticipated new fiscal year for twenty twenty one. Being on the order of twenty to thirty million dollars as an initial estimate. And again, recognizing we still have a number of unknowns as to how things will play out for the remainder, both of the current fiscal year. As well as moving into the new year. And a number of scenarios that staff has been working on as a basis for providing some revenue estimates. First, the scenario of a disaster recovery such as we would for a point in time. Emergency that we would then relatively quickly be able to recover from. Scenario B where the current shelter in place might last through the spring followed by an economic. Recession or a slow recovery. And now a new scenario that staff has begun working on. Which really reflects what we are hearing in terms of the six key indicators as examples on how. The restoration of civic life, as I've referred to it, would happen over some time with phasing. To occur over really an undefined period of time to reflect the actions necessary in order to ensure that COVID nineteen is contained. Terms of the sources of general fund revenues, this is a pie chart that. Has some coloring that you haven't seen before and we thought this might be useful as a way to describe economic. Activity sensitivity and so here shown in red are the elements of general fund revenues. That are most volatile and perhaps impacted in the near term. By the type of economic impact that we're seeing based on the. Health emergency and the resulting shelter in place orders, the yellow representing. Revenue sources that are impacted, but perhaps less clearly in terms of both the nature of the impact. As well as the timeframe through which those impacts would occur and the green sources or green slices. Relatively stable in relative, again, relative to the other sectors described here. So. As we talk about the red sections, the areas that are most impacted by with the current constraints. Sales taxes, transient occupancy tax, also known as hotel tax. And charges for services which reflect a number of inter fund charges. Or fees that are collected on based on economic activity are the major components of what reflects close to thirty. Or I'm sorry, close to fifty percent of our general fund budget. So again, sales tax, hotel taxes, charges for services and documentary transfer as it relates to real estate transactions. Really representing again, close to fifty percent of our revenue sources. So as we look at. The impact of the economic standstill that we're currently in and the slow recovery that these are. Base revenue sources for the city's general fund that will be impacted for certainly the current period and likely. Very slow to recover as we look forward. Certainly come back if there are questions on that point. In terms of the baseline budgets, we have presented through the. Transmittal letter, our baseline budget and a number of council adopted budget principles that have. Been prepared prior to the emergency period. We are recommending a series of additional principles. That we would use in bringing forward to the council for your considerations. Additional measures as had been outlined in the transmittal letter. Elements such as ensuring that we support economic recovery through our changes to policies and programs. Think that relates to much of what the council discussed earlier this evening, potentially a business support. Where we look at existing programs, existing policies, which may be considered constraints to economic recovery. Second, that we also look at a resilience over this over the long term. By taking into account service reductions that we may need to make this coming year. In ways that ensure that we can restore them in future years. Again, assuming that the recovery may extend over a period of at least a year. That we plan for potentially two years of. Constrained fiscal resources and that we are mindful as to not eliminating things altogether. In order to allow recovery to come after that. So. Elements such as not selling off real estate assets could be an example of the type of strategy that would fit here under on number two. So you know. Recognize that we would at least at this point be planning for as much as possible. Not permanent changes, changes that can be restored over a longer period of time. Third, to seek new ways to conduct our work through efficiencies as well as our learning environment. That's certainly a hallmark that we have. Been, I think, very good at demonstrating through our actions, looking for improvements in the way that we deliver services. Certainly needs to be a part of this next phase. Fourth, applying applying a broad based approach to reductions balancing impacts. You might call this sharing the pain. Such that recognizes that given the magnitude of economic or fiscal gap. That we need to close in order to have a balanced budget, that there will be impacts throughout, but to not. Focus on any specific area and recognize that there will be a need for a balancing of the impacts that are felt throughout. The community and the services that we're providing. And finally, to use temporary solutions that may need to bridge our revenue losses. That it's expected in the short term, there has been some discussion of potential just cash flow strategies. That could be used to bridge what may be the relatively short term issues considered. I would like to point out that this is not a situation in which we have been. Growing in a luxurious manner over many years, quite the contrary. In fact, over the past five years, we have seen what perhaps was a peak back in twenty eighteen in terms of actual personnel. And I give our analysts a hard time about. Calculating things to the hundredth of a person. But that said, we in round numbers had somewhere on the order of a thousand sixty. Full time equivalent employee in fiscal year twenty eighteen. And so in our current year, we are at one thousand thirty five. And as even estimated with the baseline budget that that would go down to about a thousand thirty four full time equivalent staff. So again, we're not walking into this drastic circumstance. With a luxury of staff that have been increasing over a period of time, quite the contrary. We have been already making efficiencies throughout the organization. And then focusing on the operating budget approach this coming year. That our baseline does reflect a current operating levels with revenue projections prior to the emergency. Again. I call it woefully out of date by virtue of being more than a month old in in our current situation. And that we've had a number of principles that we have followed in developing the operating budget. Documents that you have in front of you. That said, we do need to look at a number of areas in which will include our utilities. Our airport operations and wastewater funds and treatment plant that these are considered enterprises. But nonetheless, as I pointed out earlier, that these are paid for by the same people, same taxpayers. That contribute to our general fund. So we will certainly look at the necessity and the opportunities. For savings where we can focusing on suspension of rate increases as well as other. Inclusive of other actions to recognize the current environment, economic environment. That we've got nearly a hundred million dollars that have been allocated through the capital program. For these enterprise funds and that we'll need to prioritize our investments as we are looking at. The traditional or annual transfers that have happened from our transient occupancy tax receipts. And general fund contributions into the capital improvement program. So those are. Sources that we will be bringing back to the council for consideration of options. Council saw this graphic at last week's presentation, basically laying out that the council will be very busy over the. Course of the next two months in May and June with the finance committee looking specifically at utility rates and the council. In prior action directing that the budget as a whole will be coming back to the council. We've got some dates on here that are described. A little more detail here on this slide where speaking to our priorities. In ensuring that we're maintaining our essential city services in the near term and our public safety response to the public health emergency. Council tonight talking about business support efforts both in the short term as was described. For the immediate and direct financial assistance to business, but really starting to look longer term. And how that. The recognition of the importance of our business environment focus really reflects reflects. On the environment for the city as a whole and that includes all of the services that the city is able to provide. So we will proceed with budget modifications based upon a series of areas and potential service changes. That were outlined in the transmittal letter with your next full discussion planned for May eleventh. And that's where staff will come back with a series of the scenarios and how that would impact revenue projections. Over the coming fiscal year and beyond. Next, that on May twelfth or thirteenth, I know that we're looking at scheduling and schedule availability for the council. On the twelfth or thirteenth to begin an early meeting focused exclusively on budget options and budget. Strategies that can be considered in order to address the immediate issues. Beginning in the afternoon and running into the evening as necessary. That will come back at the end of May, looking at a special meeting on May twenty sixth. This is the Tuesday after the Memorial Day holiday. To come back and have a very focused discussion with the council on a balanced budget recommendations at that point. Leading to your adoption of the budget, formal budget adoption in keeping with the direction and mandates of our. Leading to your adoption of the budget, uh, formal budget adoption, uh, in keeping with the direction and mandates of our city charter uh, by, uh, the beginning of July. So with all of, uh, the, the steps ahead of us, I do want to, uh, simply reiterate for the council and council's aware of this, that you have a, an excellent team, uh, both, uh, specifically, uh, working on this budget and your, uh, executive leadership team that is experienced and unfortunately experienced, uh, in many ways in having to grapple with the kinds of challenges uh, that we as a community and as an institution have ahead of us. Uh, but certainly not to, uh, uh, in any way discount the support and the excellent team that you have for the workforce as a whole. That provides, uh, services, uh, to the city of Palo Alto, uh, community on a twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five basis. So, uh, really, uh, want to acknowledge and express appreciation that as we enter into this difficult next chapter of identifying how can we continue to serve the best services, uh, for the Palo Alto community? Uh, that you will have our, our full attention and our experience in helping the council and the community work through these, these issues. As, uh, unfortunately, uh, we find ourselves in these really, uh, difficult circumstances. Think there was a, a comment made earlier that fortunately all options have to be on the table. And that, uh, we have reflected that in the, uh, presentation that we have, uh, for you, uh, this evening, the package and the, uh, the, uh, work plan, uh, that we've laid out, uh, ahead of us. This is, uh, a challenge that involves both, uh, technical as well as, uh, uh, community conversations. There will be, uh, difficult, uh, conversations, uh, to say the least, uh, that will require our willingness, uh, to tackle issues and to raise, uh, options that will not be attractive uh, from a variety of perspectives. And, uh, there will be very tempting for us, uh, to want to reassure, uh, members of our community. And I, I mean that in the largest sense, uh, that, uh, elements will be protected and we won't be considering, uh, elimination of some services or projects that have been in the works for many years. And I think that, uh, the message, uh, certainly that I need to share with you this evening, uh, hearing council members is that we do need to have all options on the table because the magnitude of the challenge before us requires that. Uh, but that said, uh, you have our commitment, the commitment of your, uh, city team, uh, to work through this issue. Uh, and, uh, at the same time, recognize that it does present some opportunities. That as was discussed, uh, earlier, that a recognition of how interrelated our finances are with the success of our, uh, economic, uh, environment are integrally, uh, related. And all of which, uh, ensure that we're able to provide the best services, uh, to the Palo Alto community. Uh, so with that, uh, some may see that this is, uh, a, a job that no one would look forward to. And certainly the council is in, uh, less than enviable position as we bring forward, uh, what will be, uh, bad choices, unfortunately. Uh, but we will nonetheless, uh, uh, certainly, uh, be able to demonstrate, uh, to you and to the community uh, that will continue to, to bring our best thinking to the challenge, uh, and certainly, uh, that, uh, will support the leadership of the council in, uh, demonstrating, uh, that leadership that the community has come to expect. So with that, uh, Mayor, uh, turn it back to you, uh, for, uh, any questions, uh, or wherever you'd like to head with the discussion.
Great. Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Chicago. Um, so, so just a couple of comments and then I want to go to the public for, for their comments and then back to council. Um, so Ed, really want to thank you, the city management team and your entire staff for their efforts on this budget. It is a huge amount of work and, um, you know, kudos to you guys to getting this out there in such difficult times, you know, dealing with a public health emergency concurrently. Um, a few comments, um, for my colleagues and for the public and for any city staff listening. Um, you know, the, these are difficult times and right now we're dealing with effectively carryover budgets. Given the time and the magnitude of this crisis, it didn't make sense to begin development of a new fiscal year twenty-one budget at the time. And so council decided to kind of do a carryover from last year. And thus the, the dollar, the staffing and the service amounts in these budgets are highly unlikely to be adopted. Um, but we needed to start with a benchmark. We all understand that massive changes are occurring on a day-to-day basis and it seems like each day is different from the one before. Um, and next fiscal year will be very tough for Palo Alto. Um, at the same time, we need more clarity about those impacts. We've estimated a fifteen to twenty million dollar loss this year. Uh, next year could be double that or more. Council is at the start of the process here, uh, to create a balanced budget for the next fiscal year. It will be difficult. Um, but I know that the council, the community and our staff are up to the task as the city manager mentioned. I would really refer everyone out there to read, uh, pages six and seven of, of the city manager's transmit letter which lays out the magnitude of the task ahead of us, um, and how it will affect community services, staffing and council priorities. A quick scan includes evaluating or eliminating priorities for items like the public safety building, bullware park improvements, funding towards our long-term pension liabilities, reducing a fire station availability, the potential elimination of our police department traffic team, not opening select library branches, greater cost recovery at the junior museum or art center, reduced operations at our community centers, potential termination of the city's lease of covered land owned by P A U S D, deferring planning efforts such as building electrification or the housing work plan. Reducing code enforcement staffing, reducing residential parking permit program enforcement, eliminating the crosstown and embarked era shuttles, lengthening tree trimming cycles. Um, as the city manager mentioned, everything is on the table and everyone is going to be included in this, um, with some pain, unfortunately. We're at the beginning. Um, I don't want us to act rashly. We should make decisions based on data and community need. Tonight, our task is to accept this proposed budget, uh, and quickly get started on our plan for next fiscal year, not go creating brand-new big scenarios and initiatives for staff. Um, just one last note, um, a modality I like to think in a lot on big problems like who I am, you know, what we want and how we're going to get there. And so, so on this budget task, you know, who we are is that Palo Alto is a strong and diverse community. This is a great place to raise a family, go to school or, or get a good job. Um, what our citizens and staff and the council wants is an efficient and excellent government services that keep our community strong, beautiful and a great place to live and work. And how we're going to get there is by, by working together, um, by making hard choices and investing in our future. So with that, I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager, um, and Ms. Minor, if we could go to our public attendees and give them two minutes to provide us some feedback. Um, but as the schedule here shows, there will be many more touchpoints for, for public comment on this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one speaker and that's David Page. David Page, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I'm David Page from Midtown. I appreciate all your hard work. Um, I know, uh, it, these are tough times. Um, I wanted to have you think maybe about taking a little look at how to squeeze a little money out of the utilization of office space. Uh, but first I want to express my gratitude to all of those of you who are involved in getting the hundreds of city employees to work from home. Um, like, uh, with cutting the travel budget that I mentioned earlier tonight. I'm asking you to make the telecommute, uh, a develop, a permanent development. Uh, within the past few days, uh, Dave Price wrote an article in the Daily Post, uh, recommending the same thing. Uh, I thought it was pretty well done. And Sherry List Garden in the, uh, online weekly, uh, wrote that permanent telecommuting is one of the best bets for Palo Alto to reach its eighty by thirty goal. Um, so other, other benefits of this, uh, telecommuting would be, uh, less traffic, less noise, better bicycle safety, uh, worker flexibility with their family obligations and budget savings from your use of office space. Um, in addition to all that, if you can convince local businesses to do the same thing with the work-from-home phenomena, which would cost them nothing, then you could have maybe already achieved eighty by thirty, ten years early. So I'm thinking, council members, this is probably an easy vote for you. I'm an environmentalist telling you to spend no money and change nothing. Just make the telecommuting permanent and convince the private sector to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Do we have any other?
All we have.
Okay, um, all right. If, if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, uh, using the Zoom feature. All right, um, I don't see any other members of the public, so let's go back to council. I see Vice Mayor DuBois, Councilmember Tanaka, and then Councilmember Phil Seth. And please, also to my colleagues, hit the raise hand button if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, so I actually think there's probably nothing more critical that we can do or have ever been asked to do than this budget is going to be. I think we all know the situation is extremely serious. It's time to, for us to be very thoughtful. And, uh, we need to have strong discourse in these future budget meetings. We are going to be making some dramatic changes. We're going to have a lot of unknowns. We're going to need to, to move forward and just plan the best we can. And, um, I appreciate the transmittal letter. I, I know there were some comments from the community who were looking at the budget itself, but I think if you read the letter, it's pretty clear that, uh, staff was just giving us something to start with, that there are going to be a lot of changes, uh, to that budget and a lot of the assumptions, uh, most importantly, the revenue assumptions. Um, I do want to ask that, you know, as we go through the budget, that that staff works with us, gives us as complete answers as they can give, knowing that, again, this is very dynamic and you know, an answer this week might be different next week. Um, but we're going to need data and, you know, I think it'd be good to give council some opportunities to request, uh, data before we go to our next detailed budget session. Um, just a few comments on the transmittal letter. You know, if you look at page three, which was, you know, council's past adopted priorities. Um, you know, I think, I think number one still holds that we're going to want to try to be financially balanced, at least over, over the medium term. Um, you know, and then I think a lot of these priorities change. I think, you know, we are going to prioritize essential city services. Um, you know, the one-time resources are probably going to be used to fill budget gaps. Um, I do think, you know, our, our, our annual council priorities have, have probably gone out the window at this point. They shouldn't be a, a primary driver. Um, you know, and then these other things still hold, trying to ramp up cost sharing and cost savings. Um, and, um, I think really helping council also understand uh, how we can prioritize capital projects, what can be really put into a maintenance mode and what can't and why will be really important. Uh, I did appreciate, uh, kind of the, the elements on page five. Which were kind of the, the new staff priorities and, and I think I agree, I agree with all of these. You know, that we need to be focused on the economic recovery. Uh, resilience in the long term and being able to return services in future years. Um, and finding new ways to work, um, in general. Um, the one I don't really agree with, and maybe, maybe it's just the wording, but is the broad, broad-based approach. Uh, you know, like, what I don't want to see is just straight cuts across the board. I really want us to, to make some smart cuts. Uh, not, not every department's equal, not every service is equal. We are really going to have to prioritize. Um, you know, as I, as I think about this budget and I look at it, you know, I think it might be useful to, and maybe this is already staff's plan, to come back with some categories of things that could kind of be mothballed for a year. Things that could be, uh, just kind of maintained and then, you know, a pri- priority item list. And I, I think the mothball list is going to be very painful to talk about, but um, there are some things where, you know, even with, with social distancing, it may not make a lot of sense and um, it may be pretty clear that those are, are some things that we should just put on hold. Um, you know, I, I do hope this, the staff comes back with some creative proposals, some, some bold suggestions. Um, I, I do have, uh, I guess one question is, you know, we, we've heard about so many impacts to the different tax revenues. Uh, what, what impacts do staff expect to see on our utilities in general? Are you, are you less worried about the utilities?
We are seeing some reduction in sales, uh, reflecting lower energy use with the companies, uh, not operating in town. You know, to a certain extent, you might expect that to be offset by increased utility use in residences. Uh, but it's, uh, not a one-for-one. And so we are seeing some decreases there. I, I think that, uh, well, in, in general, certainly the case for businesses as well, to the extent the shelter in place is the rule. Uh, that that will result in a lower, a consumption of, uh, many of our utilities.
Great. Thank you. Um, you know, I, I, I would propose that we see, again, several scenarios. I'm sure it's what you have planned. Um, but again, just kind of eyeballing it and thinking about a ten, twenty, thirty percent revenue cut. You know, we're talking about a loss of, of, you know, twenty-something to sixty-five million dollars in the general fund. Um, some of the specific ideas that were listed, I, I know we're going to have to make hard cuts and I'll give you my initial reaction and then sure, I'll go through the stages of grief, grief and reach acceptance at some point. But, um, you know, I, I don't know if we should outright pause the, the one fifty-five pension account. You know, I think we should maybe consider a token payment. Just that it's important, a important process that we should keep active. Um, you know, we already talked about businesses. I, I really think we're going to have to try to figure out a policy on what types of businesses, um, we're going to try to support if this thing continues for an extended period of time. Um, well, so concerned about tossing out a lot of protections, I think for the community, the neighborhoods. And I think really understanding like how much of that, how much of the real cost savings is there? There were things listed like, uh, streamlining the, the five G organs. Uh, minimizing A R B review, eliminating individual review, uh, minimizing tree trimming. Those, that's always the ones that, again, uh, you know, are they really significant and they, they have a lot of impact in the community? There were some interesting ideas in here, uh, cost sharing on sidewalks. Uh, there's another one, I, you know, that I'd really like to hear more on is, you know, whether we should consider putting the T M A on pause. You know, continuing to fund that in a full amount when traffic may be down quite a bit is something I really think we should look at. Um, and then also I just would like to see some data, things like, um, suspending utility rate increases across the board seems kind of arbitrary. I, you know, we definitely want to avoid increases, but I'd like to know if our costs are going up and, and do we need some modest increases? Um, and so, you know, I, I hope we're not going to be asked to make some blanket, blanket decisions like that without seeing the underlying data. And, um, there have been some interesting letters from people in the community about, you know, considering this, um, an opportunity maybe to implement some policy. And, uh, things like, um, higher water rates for excessive water use. Uh, maybe raising gas rates to encourage electrification. Um, so thank you for the transmittal letter. I, we, we know we have a lot of work. Tonight's not, not really the night for a lot of motions. I do think, again, it'd be great to get data in advance, uh, so there's an opportunity for the council to request data prior to the next detailed budget meeting. Uh, I think that would be really useful. And for me, it's going to be, uh, seeing some really clear scenarios. Um, and on, for asking different kinds of impacts. So, um, thank you and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I agree with the idea about kind of sourcing your requests from the council, so maybe we can work on that. Um, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also want to just, uh, chime in on what, uh, customer or the vice mayor said, which is I, I think to make this process smoother, I think it's going to be important for us to get data in advance. Um, you know, ask questions or data because, um, otherwise, because we're skipping the finance meeting, so we don't have the, the first initial vetting of this budget. Um, and I think just make the process a lot smoother. So I hope the city manager can consider that. I realize that this is, this is a study session, so we're not looking for any motions tonight. Uh, one question for the city manager is, do we actually, do we have the fiscal year twenty Q one to Q num, Q three numbers? Do we know like how much revenue actually came in and how much expenses were for those quarters for Q one through Q three?
Let me ask Kylie Nozay to, let's speak to the timeliness of that data. I, I believe the answer is no, but, uh, she could speak to it more specifically.
Um, uh, you are right, Ed. Uh, we don't have the data for Q one, two and three. We do have the ga- data for Q one and two. Uh, but given the current scenario, I'm not sure how, uh, representative that data would be of what's going on. Um, bear in mind, staff is working on Q three right now and it's actually scheduled to go, it typically goes either at the end of April or in June. Uh, is the typical timeframe that it goes to finance committee or council. Uh, there's a lag in the As the typical timeframe that it goes to finance committee or council, there's a lag in the, the timing of closing of the books.
So you, you have Q-one and Q-two data, you're working on Q-three right now. Okay, and you know, for the past, I think, three-plus weeks, I've been hearing the estimate that for this fiscal year, for basically Q-four, that the city is projected to have between fifteen to twenty million dollars shortfall in its revenue. And I guess, how did you guys come up with that assumption? Like, how did that estimate come about?
Really a macro estimate based on initial sense of what was happening. You know, certainly, we've seen the hotel tax and sales tax evaporate such that extrapolation of that and assumptions around, well, not so much assumptions as understanding of what timeframes we could be working with.
Was there some sort of calculation or you, it just is just a total swag number?
We do a little better than swags, but quite frankly, given all of the variables we're working with, not a whole lot better than swags. So it is our best guess at this point, based upon the information we know.
Is it possible to show the calculation?
Well, I think we have shared the calculation and it is the fifteen to twenty. I know, council member, you've looked for more specific analysis or breakdown of assumptions. And I quite frankly, I think that that's not appropriately placed focus. That this really is a macro estimate based upon a variety of ins and outs that we are attempting to give you our best judgment on.
So, given that you have a rough estimate for Q-four, I guess, why, why for the budget for twenty, for the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-one, why base it on a year ago, why base it on the, the adopted budget of twenty-twenty? Instead of using, you have some actual, maybe not for Q-three, you have the actual for Q-one, for Q-two. You have a rough estimate for what Q-four is. Why not, why not use that as a starting point? Why, why use something that's over a year old as a starting point instead of using something which is closer to reality?
Well, that's exactly what we're doing, council member. We are adjusting our expectations based on our knowledge of the past and our understanding of what's playing out going forward. But at the same time, I wouldn't presume that putting together a budget is a simple algorithm. It does reflect understanding of the ins and outs for individual departments. And those are decisions that are ahead for us to present the council with some options and the council to give us your decisions as to where those priorities ought to be laid.
Because I'm, I'm looking at page thirty-seven, the citywide revenue by category. And it has a projection in here that versus the, the budget of twenty-twenty, that we're going to do nineteen-point-six percent more revenue this year versus last year. And I guess, I don't think anyone here on this call thinks that's actually going to happen. And, like, for instance, it shows our sales tax going up by nine-point-five percent. I talked to a bunch of retailers, no, no retail thinks their, their sales are going to go up this year. This shows the TLT at one-point-three percent increase. And all the hotels I've talked to basically tell me that, you know, they're like less than ten percent. They think they'll be lucky to do half of what they did in twenty-twenty. So, I guess, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, why do we start with something that's so off from reality, from what we know already?
I'm, I'm just going to jump in quickly, so councilmember Tanaka, it's in the city charter, the city manager does have to present a budget and go through the budget process with the finance committee or council. And if, you know, reading the letter, a staff is saying this is an enormous crisis, we don't have complete clarity on the impacts yet on our revenue or expenditures yet, but we need to start somewhere. And so, as we all voted on about a month ago, we decided to put in a placeholder budget, which are these documents here. And we all know that the numbers are wildly off, but we need to start somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I realize that, okay, so it's intent that we're going to pass this budget using this placeholder budget, or is, is intent is we're going to revise these numbers to make them reflect reality?
The second.
Okay, because if we're going to do that, it, it would seem to me that we would want to, I mean, at what point in time will these numbers be closer to reality? Because I don't, I mean, I'm looking at other cities, and every other city around us is doing like, having a ten, fifteen or percent or more drop in revenue. And we're projecting this nineteen-point-six percent increase. So at what point in time will we start projecting numbers that seem to be aligned with reality?
So, councilmembers, as we just mentioned, you know, this is, this is a placeholder budget. And on the last page of the presentation, it lays out a schedule in which course we're going to go through it and make those changes. And we understand it is also likely a fifteen or twenty or greater percent drop in the city's revenues. But we have to start from somewhere.
Okay, well, I, I understand that, so we're starting with this nineteen-point percent increase in revenue versus last year, which we all agree is not reality. And my question is, according to your schedule, can we really see like a new page thirty-seven that's closer to what's really happening, happening in our economy today?
Councilmember, as I pointed out in my presentation, on May eleventh, you will have new figures.
Okay, so May eleventh, we'll get something that is closer to what's really happening in the, in the community today.
So on May eleventh, we will present updated information. I do object to the suggestion that our numbers, as I described it, are woefully out of date. The characterization of reality or unreality, quite frankly, is inflammatory and just doesn't reflect the time over which these changes have happened.
Well, I mean, this is a very long document, it's like three hundred something pages, almost four hundred pages. And, you know, we're, we're on this accelerated schedule to try to approve this budget. And it seems like there's some things we know aren't right. Like, I think we know our TOT revenue projection is not right. But let me move on, so I think to get through this, I think that's, one thing that's going to be really, really important is, and I liked how you started listing stuff on your page five of stuff for us to consider. I think what would help us is if we actually had a list of prioritization of basically, what is the suggestion, how much, how much is it? And I, I, I hope this is what you're planning to do, is, is to actually have, so we actually could see what does it cost and what do we, what do you consider, what do you think we should consider in terms of perhaps making changes on? So, is that part of the plan, as part of budget process, to actually have like a laundry list of stuff roughly prioritized for us with dollar amounts on them?
We will give you our estimates and some preliminary suggestions as to priorities. Ultimately, councilmember, that will be decisions you will need to make.
Sure, I, I guess what's important, what's missing on page five is it doesn't have any numbers on them, so it's kind of hard to know, right? Like, for instance, you proposed to give up the crossing cards, but I wasn't sure, like, is that a lot or is that not a lot, right? I guess it'd be good to know how much it is.
That information will be forthcoming.
Okay, awesome. And then, I know there are some general principles you laid out, one of them which is you want to just use temporary solutions. And I, I guess I, to me, this is on page, page five of your, of your report. So, you're, you're, you're suggesting that we make permanent solutions to bridge a gap here. And I guess, I guess I, I'm, I'm just curious to know why, because I, I mean, there are some things, for instance, like, most of the fire agencies we have right now aren't, aren't actually fires, it's actually EMT. So, why, for instance, would we not try to maybe move to more of an EMT type of approach, since most of our medical emergency is not actual fires? Or maybe because of, because of the pension liabilities associated with all of the employees, why not look at more contract services? So things that put us on a better economic footing on a sustainable basis. I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand the rationale to just go for, for temporary solutions to bridge these extreme revenue losses versus more, more sustainable type of fixes.
I think you're, you're taking that one bullet actually out of context. The specific there, and I referenced this in my presentation, related to cash flow issues where that may apply. At the same time, we're also certainly want to consider and discuss with the council any ways to change or the way we do business. So to your point, where it's feasible and effective, looking at modified ways to staff certain services certainly are, again, on the table.
And then the other part, and I actually agree with the vice mayor on this, which is, you know, to use broad-based approach. To me, I think it's probably better to do a few things well, and just do like a ten percent or twenty percent cut across the board. To me, doesn't seem like the right move, it seems like it'd better be more surgical. And, you know, the other thing is, when I was looking at the, the twenty-twenty-one budget, it has essentially one manager for every four employees, which is relatively low spend of control. And, I mean, so I, so I think just, just two thoughts I have, one thought I had is, first of all, I don't think just a broad-based cut across all the things makes sense. I think probably understand what the priorities are and then cutting the areas that have less priority would make more sense to me. And then the second thing is, we're fairly management-heavy, and having actually had time to look at other cities, but it, just in terms of other organizations, I know. It's like a one manager for every four employees, seeming like a lot of chiefs, not a lot of Indians. And so I think having, having like a larger spend of control, because it seems like we're relatively top-heavy, and a lot of the higher-level employees are very expensive, right? And so, to me, it would seem that the other thing we should look at is, can we can we trim some at the top, right, so that we don't have to cut as much services for the people in their city? And go a little bit lighter on the management side. So that's, that's the other aspect I had, I, I thought I had, rather than just a broad-based thing, look at the top. The top management structure, look at individual departments or individual services to figure out which ones you really need to cut. Versus just a broad-based cut, because that doesn't seem like a really, really good idea. And then, the last thing, and I, you didn't really talk about it, but so I assume it's just not the plan, but there wasn't necessarily talk about like massive tax increases or fees to to bridge a gap. And so, I just want to say, I, I support the idea of not doing that, because I know so many people in our community are hurting. A lot of, a lot of our residents are, a lot of our businesses are, and they're barely making it, so I think we don't want to add to the problem. Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks very much. You know, mostly what I wanted to do is thank staff for getting us to this point and going forward. I think the direction that staff is approaching this is logical and systematic, just the way I would have done it. Except we did it in much more detail and better. You know, as before, I believe in the two thousand and eight recession, general fund revenues dropped something like four percent, deep the trough. And here, we're looking at ten to fifteen percent drop or more if scenario C materializes. I mean, look at the red pie chart slice and do your lifting. So we're already at least twice the severity of the two thousand and eight recession. We are in uncharted territory. Looking at a pretty intense period ahead of us. So, I want to thank staff for, not, not just for what you've done so forth, but especially for the very trying time you're going to go through in the next month or six weeks as we all will, and then in the months and hopefully not years. So, appreciate it very much. Look forward is a, is an odd phrase, but I look forward to looking at the fix on this.
Here, here, councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, and just picking up where councilmember Phil Seth left off. I think scenario C is the most realistic. If you think about the six indicators that we discussed earlier this evening and the likelihood of when, if a vaccine is going to be available. It would be my preference as we build this budget to be as conservative as possible. And then if we are able to add things back during the year to do it that way, rather than to have to continue to make cuts. So, I want to start with that. I just want to be super clear to anybody who actually is listening, doesn't spend as much time with the budget as we do, is that the revenue we expect to receive next year derives the services and programs that we're going to be able to afford. And that will determine the resources we can bring to bear. It really starts with the revenue, it doesn't start with what we want, so I just want to reiterate that. Honestly, it's going to break my heart to not reopen all five of our libraries. But the reality is, everybody's heart is going to be broken during this process. And while we're doing this, I don't want us to forget about our long-term problems. There will be a reflexive tendency to do that. I think we should continue to work on them. I spoke at our, our retreat, remember, when we talked about fiscal sustainability not being a priority because it's a value. And it's actually one of the first values we have. So, with respect to pensions, here's the metaphor I want to use. A big storm has come up, and I don't think we should stop bailing. So, that's how I feel about the pension part. Climate change and train crossings, to me, are in the same category of, yeah, this is a really awful emergency, but those problems will be there when we come back. So, I don't want us to mothball the ones that are really big and long-term. With respect to infrastructure and the capital budget, I have a really specific request. I want the information on page six of the transmittal level letter with page thirteen and attachment A to the transmittal letter and the proposed operating transfers out on page sixty-five of the operating budget. I'm sure ASD staff is following all of this. Those three things need to be put together on the same page. That's the only way we're going to be able to do that prioritization on the capital side that people have been talking about. And finally, I realize it's a drop in the bucket or a rounding error, both, both references we've used earlier this evening. But earlier today, I did ask the city manager and our chief financial officer to stop paying my salary through the end of the year.
Thank you, councilmember Cormac. Councilmember Niss.
So, it's interesting to have this discussion tonight while we're quite calm, believe it or not. And interesting to think that, you know, that we may be able to prioritize easily. I, I think it's going to be extraordinarily difficult. Ed, I, as you listen tonight, how does that alter the way you might present this to us the next time we're together?
I think the council is giving us some good feedback in terms of how we put together information for your next session on the eleventh. The, the reports that we'll put together, I know will reflect as much information as we can share, recognizing areas of uncertainty, but to provide as much data for the council as we can in bringing forward those options. I would like to just take the moment and take the, the opening to reiterate that we've demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to communication and transparency in the work that we've undertaken over the last several weeks and beyond, but certainly in the last several weeks. And want to reiterate that that will be continued and confirm my commitment and our team's commitment to continue to, to provide as much information publicly in as transparent a manner as we can. And then, so as we bring information back to the council, to also try to structure your decision-makings in ways that reflect and, and support you there.
So, I would urge us to try not to completely tear your budget apart. It will be very tempting. I would also hope that you might think of something that the vice mayor mentioned two hours ago now, which is the A, B, and C option. It will be very tempting to take this piece by piece by piece and dissect it. And I think that's not going to be very productive in the long run. Yes, Allison spoke of, what did you say, Allison, we want to keep bailing or not bailing, whatever it might be. But this is really tough stuff, we're discussing it very rationally tonight. It's going to be difficult, and we're actually taking it, looking at it, and whether we're cutting the library or the fire station, or whether we're cutting, you know, some program that's near and dear to us, it's, it's very tough. One other aspect of this, this is something the public is really going to weigh in on. I have never done a budget that wasn't done in public with, you know, usually tens, if not hundreds, of people there. So how, how will we, I probably should ask Beth, but it's taking us a while to get through people who want to talk to us. Is there some more expedient way that we can do this if there are even thirty or forty people who want to speak to us?
Well, the magic of Zoom has given us a new platform, so that's certainly an asset and an avenue that we'll, we'll try. Well, the magic of Zoom has given us a new platform. So that's certainly an asset and an avenue that we'll, we'll try to maximize. Uh, but once again, you know, our, our, uh, communication channels, uh, through this public health emergency have, have reached many more people than we've been able to, uh, certainly on, uh, any, uh, routine topic of interest for the city. So we use those, uh, you know, to a certain extent, it depends on where we are in shelter in place. As, uh, we get into May and, uh, ob- obviously into June as well, uh, in how we best, uh, do what we used to call a roadshow, but maybe now it's not a roadshow. It's something virtual, whatever that's going to be, uh, but we'll, we'll keep at it.
So my concern though is how, how on the night, I mean, as soon as we come back in May, somebody, there, there will be people who want to speak on it. So I, I'm asking, I guess, Beth more than anyone, you know, how we haven't had a number of speakers yet. If we had twenty or thirty or forty speakers, can we make, can we move that along rapidly? Or is that, um, is it the Zoom process that just takes a while?
I believe part of it is the Zoom process that takes a little bit. It's also trying to coordinate with the attendees who want to speak and if they don't want to speak. Um, we do have our other channels too, where, uh, the public can send emails into council to say what they're interested in, um, and what they want to change. But, um, I think this is the Zoom way and we do try to get the speakers on as expeditiously as we can.
I would say that it's probably going to take a little extra time. So you've left extra days in there for us to schedule and, and we may need those. But, um, I think you've all done a terrific job putting this together. This is a, a tough year and it's, um, it's very clear and it's very clear that we're going to have to make some decisions we probably never thought we would have to make. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Um, and finally, we have Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So, um, I just want to say thank you very much to the staff for putting this together and going through the budget. It, it was certainly something that wasn't planned for, so, um, you had to turn around and do something really quickly. So I understand, you know, what you have in place and what you're going to bring back to us on the eleventh. Um, as I was hearing some of the things that the city manager was saying was, you know, communication and transparency. As Councilmember Niss had said, you know, that is going to be top priority on how to communicate all of this and being transparent to the entire community. Uh, our community is pretty used to a lot of the great services that the city puts out and all the opportunities and programs. Um, so I think that that's, um, high, high top need, uh, in order to make sure everybody is aware of what is happening. Um, also, did I hear correctly? Um, so you have a baseline right now that is created, but to have a baseline that is more in line with what we're going through, we don't have, so we have Q one and Q two, but are we, we're not able to get three and four? I mean, um, well, four hasn't happened yet, but are we able to get what we ha- when COVID happened in March and then forecast what we expect until June?
Yes, uh, really focusing on the, the forecast, uh, is, uh, where our attention is, um, uh, at this point and going forward. So again, back on May eleventh, we will, uh, be presenting some updated estimates based upon our best knowledge at the time of both what has transpired, uh, to this point, as well as, uh, the orders and, and transitions that we anticipate coming, uh, into the next fiscal year.
Okay, um. Um, also, when you're going through, looking at reductions and what programs to, um, put on the shelf, are you going to go department by department?
Well, that's certainly the way that we're approaching it without, uh, limiting our, um, review, uh, to individual departments. So we, we look at the departments as clusters where there may be related services and where there can be efficiencies across, uh, various departments. And we're anticipating that that's the way we'll present it to the council through groupings rather than individual departments at a time.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, um, I was thinking that community services is going to be really hard to, um, to look at what is essential and what, how to cut things over there because there's so many programs there that is so valuable to the community. Um, let me see. So I, um, you know, the state, when I was reading, um, you know, when the, um, lobbyists came and they presented the letter from the Budget Committee, uh, at the state, um, they're going to present, they're going to pass a bare-bone budget and then have amendments as they go forward. Is that a good way to do it or is not something that we, we want to do?
I'm not, quite frankly, very clear on how, uh, that compares to our, uh, budgeting process. So perhaps Kylie or others may want to weigh in on the distinction. I mean, it made it sound like there is a baseline that they would, uh, establish and then add enhancements, uh, when, uh, as funds are available. I think our, if we were to take that, uh, conceptual approach, that that baseline, uh, would be perhaps at the far end of the estimates or in far conservative, meaning the, the greatest cuts, uh, that, um, we're discussing. So I think it, it may be just a, a slight variation on what we're talking about in that, uh, we'll come up with a few scenarios that will allow the council to decide based upon the most conservative, how, um, you know, quite frankly, this, this will be a painful exercise. So how much, uh, to balance the expectation of, uh, confidence that the funds will be available with some of the strategy around the, managing the pace of change and pace of reductions as, uh, maybe necessary, given the financial constraints.
Um, can you tell me, so do you have some prospective scenarios that you have in place, the options A, B, and C that you might have any idea about that yet?
Well, and those are really in terms of revenue. So we're looking at those as revenue scenarios. We have not yet put together, uh, uh, expense scenarios that reflect, you know, again, the lightest to the heaviest level of cuts. Again, that, that exercise in and of itself will be a pretty, uh, dramatic one. And to a certain extent, you know, the magnitude of the overall cut defines how, whether it's best to try to keep a small portion of a program, uh, in place, or better to do away with a program altogether, uh, uh, depending on, uh, you know, where the, that, um, kind of break even, and that's not the right term to use, but basically is it continuing to be viable or not? And, uh, as I noted earlier, you know, if we use, say, a two-year planning horizon, then some things can limp along for that period of time. Other things are better to perhaps, uh, do away with altogether for the first year and then focus on rebuilding it, uh, in, in the second year. So, uh, there can be some, uh, scenarios that play out that way that we need to discuss with the departments.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, thank you for all the work and I look forward to the eleventh, you know. Um, yeah, well, I don't really look forward to all the things that we have to decide, but it'll be good to go through this, uh, this exercise so that we know what to expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. Um, just a couple of comments. I've been taking some notes. Um, so a number of folks have mentioned, you know, data requests or questions via council. And so it'd be appreciated if staff could give us some kind of form where we can each send our questions before that May eleventh meeting. Um, Vice Mayor DuBois mentioned the idea of like mothballing projects. I, I'd also be interested in that, like, are there things that we can hold off on for a year or two and hopefully not, you know, lose progress or maybe we focus on the design and engineering, but not the actual build. Um, and kind of in contrast to that, are there things we should think about accelerating right now? I know I've mentioned, you know, Redwood City implementing paid parking during a recession. Are there other opportunities that this presents us to, you know, initiate, whether it is like a business register, if we're going to be doing business support? I don't know, but I'm just wondering if there are certain things in, in staff's experience that may be the right to accelerate right now. And then kind of related to that is Councilmember Cormac's point about not losing sight of the long-term, uh, priorities of councils for many, many years. And I, I think a few in there that, that fall in there are probably, you know, the priorities we have this year, housing, transportation, and climate change, um, have been priorities for quite some time. And, you know, even if traffic is not so much of a problem right now, uh, when the economy comes back, it would be great if we're somewhat prepared for that. Same on the parking front. Um, a few folks have questioned, you know, we, we don't have good data on the first half of this calendar year and how it's going to be affecting our budget. Do, are there any kind of like leading indicators that could shape or color the estimates we're making? Like, what, what are we actually doing there, first of all? And then what else could we be looking at to get somewhat accurate forecasts there?
Let me ask Kylie to respond on that note.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Um, yes, obviously from a, as this is a literally weekly evolving situation, um, the data that we are going for is frankly, stuff that we have to go out and ask, um, the businesses that are impacted by this. So it's really looking, especially on the TOT side, um, you know, our hotels are part of the San, the Northern County, um, CBB. So we'll talk to them about the data they have about what's happening, or some of the more prominent figures, we'll call them and see how the hotels are doing, frankly. Uh, what are the rates that they're seeing? Uh, and so because our information is on a lag, um, we're doing our best to get real-time information, um, from the sources. But obviously we are looking at national news, local news, et cetera, um, from that perspective. But again, things are changing on a weekly basis, so there is not a perfect silver bullet data source at this time.
Are there other like data sources you, you wish you had that you know are out there but haven't been able to access yet?
I think the real, the, the biggest issue in terms of data collection, while it's not even data collection, is what is the rate of recovery, for lack of a better term? And that's the real variable that will drive all of our planning and, you know, ultimately, uh, the resources that we'll have to work with. And so that's not a data exercise. It is, uh, to a large extent, a, a crystal ball. It's not, you know, unlike any, uh, prior, uh, downturn I've dealt with, this is not a situation in which you could look to the past to tell the future. The, the future will really be driven by, uh, factors and functions that are yet to be defined.
Sure, no, understandable. Thank you. Um, and then just last one, Councilmember, uh, Niss mentioned, you know, engagement during our budgeting process. Um, while Zoom is great and, you know, people can use it, it's not for everyone and it may not be the most informative on budgeting items. Um, I know we've, you know, kind of like poo-pooed on certain, um, you know, participatory budgeting exercises in the past, like, you know, put your stickers where you'd spend your dollars. Um, but I would just encourage staff, you know, in this special environment, do we need to look at some of those tools that maybe, uh, can happen asynchronously? As the city council develop our, develops our budget, what, you know, the citizens and businesses and, you know, folks who live, work, and play here care about and how they would spend the city's money. May- maybe it's helpful. Um, all right, this being a study session, I don't think we need any action. Um, so once again, do want to thank the city manager and your entire team, um, Kylie and everyone for developing this and, you know, we will work together on this tough problem.
One step at a time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, um, we still have a fairly full agenda to go through. Um, we have item three next, which is a discussion of board and commission recruitments. We have a couple of agenda changes, minutes and consent. Um, and then one action item, which may be moved out. So let's get on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor Fine and Councilmembers. Beth Minor, City Clerk. Um, I'm bringing to you tonight a, a request for guidance on update or discussion of the spring twenty twenty board and commission, um, recruitment for the HRC, the Public Art Commission and the Utility Advisory Commission. Prior to the pandemic, we had been recruiting for all three of those commissions and had been in the recruitment process for five weeks out of seven that we were going to be doing. With that recruitment, we were only able to get one application for three positions on the HRC. Um, Public Art Commission, we received four applications for four expiring positions. And on the UAC, we've got four applications to fill two expiring positions. And we also halted their, um, commission meetings due to the fact that we were trying to figure out how council was even going to hold their meetings. And so most of the boards and commissions have not been meeting, um, with the exception of the planning and transportation utilities. And I think it was, um, ARB that held, uh, a board meeting. Um, so we're kind of looking to try and see, do we, does council want us to go back out and do another recruitment? The, um, municipal code states that we're supposed to do a fifteen-day recruitment, but over the last several years, we've done a longer recruitment like this one. We were going to do seven weeks and we got into it for five weeks. Um, or do we want, do you want us to, uh, bring back, like, say, the UAC, um, those two, um, interview? Um, so we're just kind of looking for guidance on how you would like us to continue with this um, due to the fact that we did have a, a poor response to most of the, these boards when we sent them out. So we're looking for guidance from you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I first, we do have a current ad hoc composed of Vice Mayor DuBois and Councilmember Cormac, uh, working on a range of issues and opportunities for our boards and commissions. So I first want to go to them. So, uh, let's go to Vice Boys, then Councilmember Cormac, if that's okay.
Yeah, we did not talk about this item in detail, so you'll, we get two different opinions, but, uh, yeah, I, I hope this isn't controversial. Maybe we could dispose of this quickly. You know, I think, I, I think we've learned how to do these remote meetings now that we should reopen recruiting for HRC and the Public Art Commission. I think we have enough applicants. We should just schedule interviews for the UAC and, um, unless somebody strongly opposes, I'd, I'd go ahead and make that motion that, um, we reopen recruiting for the two commissions for fifteen days, that we go ahead and schedule interviews for the UAC. And the last thing I'd say is I think we can also advertise these in our, uh, COVID email updates and just, you know, really, I think of all of us make a push, we'll be able to get some more applicants to these two.
I would second that, if I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted.
Thank you, Liz. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So there's a motion to reopen the Human Relations Commission and the Public Art Commission for, for fifteen days, I presume?
Is that sufficient, Tom, do you think?
Uh, I, I think, I think it is. I think, my concern with the HRC is that we actually will have some nonprofit discussions and we should actually probably push for that one to get filled rapidly.
If, if we could discuss this another time too, there's been some discussion about taking the HRC from seven to five, um, by the actual commission. Whoops.
Yeah.
My screen has just disappeared.
And, and then there's a second, there's a second, like, Councilmember Niss. Niss, uh, Liz, if you just want to speak about why you're seconding this motion, please.
Um, yes, because I think we at least need another fifteen days. As I was just saying to the maker of the motion though, um, would you be comfortable with thirty days instead of fifteen, given that we have the budget in the middle of that? Are you hearing me?
Yeah, I am. Uh, yeah, it's just a question. We'll, we'll be pushing these out. Um, but maybe everything just gets shifted out. So if that's, I'm, I'm fine with thirty, I'm, I'm fine with fifteen, so whatever the majority thinks.
I'd really like fifteen and if you are comfortable with that, could we stick with it?
Sure.
Okay, in that case, I'm a solid second.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmember Cormac, if you have any comments on this, just being on the ad hoc and having looked at some of these things?
Thank you so much. Um, the reason I didn't second the motion is because I think this gives us an opportunity um, to do some of the work that has been paused, um, during the emergency. Um, I do think we should revisit the size of, of frankly, almost all of our commissions. Um, so, um, it would be my preference, um, to ask staff to come back and, um, make a proposal about, um, the size of the Human Relations Commission and any, um, changes we need to make to ordinances for it to be at five. I think Um, changes we need to make to ordinances for it to be at five. I think that Public Art Commission, we could probably also consider being five. I'm not saying we should do that, but we should consider doing that. And I would be interested in the staffers who support it. Um, the pros and cons of that. Um, it would certainly give us an opportunity. What I would hate to have happen is what unfortunately happened with the Library Advisory Commission. We appointed someone new and then we decided we, it was time for the commission to be disbanded. We might end up in the same position with this. We go ahead and we put seven people on the H R C and the Public Art Commission. And then in a few months, when we finally have time to work on it, we're like, oh, you know, we probably don't need seven, we need five. And then, you know, it'll be years before we can fix that. Um, so. You know, I, I, I hate to make a substitute motion when, you know, we have so many other important things going on, but I really don't want to lose this opportunity. Um, if this is the right time to right-size some of these commissions.
Can, can, may I interrupt and just suggest, could you, could you add that on to this current motion and indicate? At the same time, we should consider um, re. Reevaluating the size of those two commissions.
Don't know if that's even possible. Perhaps the, one of the attorneys can weigh in. The other thing that I'm concerned about with this motion is that the terms expire on May thirty first. We've just assigned an awful lot of time for council to be working on um. Uh, the budget in that mid-May timeframe. I don't see when we're going to have time to interview the public art and H R C people. Um, you know, if we. If we extend it. But I, oh, you moved it back to fifteen days. Okay, that's fine. When you were moving it to thirty, I was concerned. Actually, I think I'm still concerned about the timeline.
If I think if I understand Liz's suggestion, it would be that we. Ask staff to consider the reduction, but it would take effect not for this interview, but for the following one. Is that what you mean, Liz?
Um, you mean not for. You mean the next time we go out and interview, Tom, is that what you mean?
Well, I, I'm not sure how we recruit for people and reduce it at the same time. If, if we're trying to reduce it right now, or do we put it, you know, for the next recruitment, we would adjust it then.
Well, or is it better to reduce it now? And or, or consider reducing it now and then go out and recruit?
Yeah, so this is just jumping. Um, you know.
Makes a lot more sense.
On the H R C, there are seven members, there are three open positions and one applicant. On Public Art, there are seven members, there are four applicants in four positions. So I mean, we, we would need to work with staff and our city attorney, but. I think it may be feasible to say, reduce both to five and go out for recruitment. And it just means, you know, the H R C will have one opening and Public Art will have two.
I, I think that, I think putting everything together, that would make the most sense.
If the maker and seconder would consider doing that, I, I, I think that would mean that we um. You know, we don't lose two years on this. If we, if we decide that it's appropriate to reduce it, again, I, I absolutely want, want the staff who. Um, work with these commissions to, to share their thoughts.
Um, many from the H R C have asked me to reduce it before, so. Um, you might find support there. I don't know about the Art Commission as precisely.
So I, 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 I support this idea. I guess, I think. Uh, Councilmember Cormac, you were kind of asking staff to see if they, I think, what their thoughts were.
Um, I didn't know if somebody from the attorney's office wanted to weigh in, as I recall, when we reviewed everything on the ad hoc. The H R C has slightly different um, rules in the municipal code and it might require updates, so. I don't know if anybody from the attorney's office wants to weigh in and help us figure out how to do this.
Sure. So, thank you. This is Molly Stump, City Attorney. So um, the. A reduction in the size of the commissions is not on your agenda for tonight, but you can ask that that item come back for a future meeting. Um, and then what that would take to actually implement if council decides that it wants to reduce the size of one or more commissions. Is we would come back with an ordinance, because the size of all the commissions is set forth in your municipal code. So it's a, it's a relatively straightforward amendment to the municipal code and it would take two readings. But um, you, it does make sense, I think, in terms of a practical terms, that if you were going to do that. You would be, certainly be doing that before you did any interviews, so that all the applicants knew. You know, were aware of whether they were joining a seven-member commission or likely joining a five-member. And uh, you know, how many applicants for how many positions. And obviously you would have to make that decision before you actually made appointments.
So would it be feasible for staff to come back on May fourth with that? I'm just looking at the timeframe.
From the clerk's office. The clerk and the city manager, yeah.
Yeah, from the clerk's position, I don't think we could, because that agenda goes out this next week. Um, or this week, and I don't, we wouldn't have time to get it ready for the, the meeting.
So we, uh, we do have pretty rapid turnover in some of these places, you know, people move on. I, I still think we could, we could go ahead and interview as is and make the change for the next round. It won't be two years. I mean, it'll happen soon.
Okay, well then, if the maker and seconder uh, would consider a friendly amendment to direct staff to return with um. Options um. For reducing the number of commissioners on the H R C and the P A C. And I guess I, we should just consider whether or not you want to put it all on there.
Yeah, so just for, speaking for a minute, um, you know, we, we could come back with options, which would include either doing it now or doing it at the next recruitment. And then if you had, if you decided on the second option. And you had vacancies, you could hold the positions vacant and not interview for replacements. On the assumption that the position would be disappearing, but you wouldn't want to, the, the size of the commission. To get smaller just based on people leaving. And, and you never, of course, want to set up a body with an even numbered.
Which we currently have on the H R C due to a vacancy, so.
It ha- it happens from time to time, but it's, it's obviously not a best practice when you're setting the number of a, a board or commission.
Okay.
Could, could we walk through this again? Because the outcome I would like to have is to shrink it. Is to reduce the number before we actually make the new appointments. Which wouldn't mean that we couldn't schedule the interviews regardless. But if there's any way to do that, that would be my desirable outcome.
I don't think, I'm, I'm just going to jump in again, just for expediency. Uh, I think there are two options. One is we go forward with some form of recruitment now. Uh, and then work on reducing the boards and that'll be in the next cycle, whether it's through attrition or whether it's two years out. The other option is to say, we want to reduce those boards now. And we will do the interviews and actual recruitment uh, and appointments after the boards have been reduced. And I'll be honest, that, that's my preference.
And that's my, that's right.
So it's, it's, wh- whether you're putting the cart or the horse first, you just take your pick.
Which, which one were you describing, the cart or the horse?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure which I'm calling which, uh, but I, I think my preference is. If we are interested in doing this reduction, we should do it now when we have the vacancies. And then additionally, go out, recruit new folks and appoint them when the boards have been uh, right-sized.
Yeah, and, and I concur, because otherwise if, if we shrink it. Um, later, it's going to be another two years before. I, I think this can be um, reduced again, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, Liz, go ahead.
Now, go ahead, Tom.
Well, you guys keep saying two years. There's a bunch of people that will expire next year, right? It's like half the commission each year. But I get your point.
It, it depends. It depends if they're on three-year terms. So I, I think my friendly amendment is still pending, which is to ask staff to return. They haven't picked a date yet, and it's hard to figure out how this is going to be in concert, but maybe we could let them try. To come back with options um, and, and recommendations on um. Uh, changing the size of the Human Relations Commission and the Public Art Commission. And then we'll see where we are. Maybe we aren't going to get any more applicants and then we'll have more information.
So where does that put us, Allison, in, in your description of this as far as whether it's the cart or the horse?
Um, I think we want to put the horse before the cart.
So is, is the horse the one carrying the five days first or, or not? I mean, the five, the reduction to five. The question is, do we go to the reduction to five first, or do we go to the reduction to five after we've interviewed and selected and then said. Sometime in the future, it will go down to five.
My preference would be the former.
Yes, so we are saying, uh, we will hold off on recruiting until, I, I know you're saying we should do it parallel. I think Molly was saying that maybe that would be difficult. I don't know.
I, I think there's a potential for confusion and missteps there. Um, if council can tolerate a, a little bit of a slower process uh, on getting folks seated on those commissions. I do think it makes most sense to have the staff come back. And again, this isn't on your agenda to make this decision tonight. Final decision to reduce the size. So we would come back at some future agenda in May. And we'll have to talk about when um, with that item. Uh, get direction on that and then we can implement that, turn that.
That item is five. That item reduction.
Yes, to reduce to five. And then once you've made that decision and now we're, we're preparing the ordinance and we're going to come back on consent with it. At that point, then you can reopen your recruitment. You know what your goal is then, and it's clear to everyone.
And that.
I propose language, which is that we direct staff to return, you know, as soon as, as possible. With reductions in Public Art and H R C to, you know, your members. And then we do the rest of the piece laid out here by the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Niss.
But, but scheduling, we can schedule interviews for the U A C. That can continue now.
Right. U A C is.
Yeah, this one is just art and human resources.
Okay, would, would that language be acceptable to Vice Mayor and Councilmember Niss?
Yes, the, the city clerk.
You mean, you mean to Tom. Yes, this is, yes, if, yes, let's see if we can, let's see if we can smooth that out a little bit.
Okay, so my, my language was to direct staff to return uh. With uh, you know, ordinance changes to modify those two commissions to fewer members.
Good, okay.
Then to proceed with all, to proceed with the Public Art and H R C recruitments as written here. And then on U A C, we can do right now.
Mayor Fine, like, I'm just going to repeat what, what our city attorney said. We can't direct the reductions, we can ask for options.
Sure.
We're not making a decision tonight. We're asking staff to come back and tell us. Yes, we think this might be a good idea and here's how you would do it if you wanted to do it. Or maybe they'll come back and say it's a terrible idea. We've talked with the staff who work with these commissions and we don't think it's a good idea.
Does this not cap, capture that direct staff to return with ordinance changes to modify?
No, it's the part below, options for reducing. We need the options and those might include ordinance changes.
So we would not come back with an ordinance next time. We're going to come back with a discussion item. You're going to tell us if you want an ordinance at that point. And then we can move quickly after that.
Okay, direct staff to return with the discussions to reduce.
Does that satisfy four of us? I guess it does at this point.
Options for reducing the P A C and H R C.
Reopen recruiting for the.
And then reopen.
Um, but you don't want to leave the fifteen days in there, do you?
We need some time.
Somebody has an opinion, otherwise, I mean.
I know, the reason, the reason, I think, I think the fifteen days is an issue, because that's a very short time if we're also considering a reduction. I mean, if we're determined to do it and that like the time plus.
The whole, the whole, we're going to first have a discussion about changing membership numbers.
Right.
Then staff will return with an ordinance if we choose to do that. Then there will be a meeting and at that point, the two commissions will have their new right-size numbers. And then we will go out for recruitments.
We can, we can delete the fifteen days.
Delete fifteen days and we'll do what the clerk recommends.
Or can you, or can you say fifteen days after a decision is made?
Uh, we can just let the clerk decide at that point, I think.
I think that would, I think that would be, was that you, Lydia? Who just said that?
It was Lydia.
Because I think that might, that might actually work. I'm looking to see what the clerk is putting in there.
Yeah, my concern is this may take a while. And the people we have that applied now, we may need to go contact again. So why don't we just leave it up to the clerk?
To let her decide, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor Fine.
I know, so sorry for jumping in and having a, you know, family dinner table discussion.
It's the cart and the horse I like.
I should have asked, were there any public commenters on this?
No, there's not.
Okay, um, anybody else on council, uh, please don't do what I did and just jump right in. Please raise your hand. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, just briefly, I'm looking forward to this coming back to, to council, but. I actually don't think it matters very much which is, which is in front, the horse or the cart. I think, I, I totally agree with Councilmember Cormac, that the library commission situation, you don't want to have that where. You know, we recruit somebody to it and then three months later we tell them, oh, thanks very much, but by the way, you need to. In this case, I don't, I don't see that happening. What's going to happen here is the worst case is we recruit somebody to it. And then a year later, some more people leave and it shrinks. But that's a, that's a much different situation. So I think it's flexible enough that it can work either way and stuff. I, I think the motion is fine.
Um, alright, if I don't see any other hands, let us all please vote. Um, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yep.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Absolutely.
Myself is yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes seven to zero. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Um, and thank you to all our boards and commissioners and folks who applied. Um, we appreciate your, your service to the city. Okay, um, next item is uh, changes, additions and deletions. Two quick announcements. Uh, item number ten is being moved out to May fourth and item number eight. Has been canceled. Anything else from the city?
That is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on to oral communications, where members of the public may speak to any item not agendized. And City Clerk, if you could please help me um, with members of the public uh, who would like to comment.
I will. We have uh, Judy Kleinberg would like to speak, so I will um, unmute her at this time. She won't unmute.
Here we go, can you hear me now?
It's all you.
That's good there. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I am speaking tonight as the uh, Chair of Palo Alto's Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Birthday Celebration. Uh, and Palo Alto Day. Uh, Palo Alto's Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Birthday Celebration was supposed to end with a very special event today. To wrap up the year, sadly, that can't happen. Uh, our plan was to thank City Manager Chikata and his fabulous staff for their support and creativity during the celebration last year. So please accept our sincere thanks tonight on behalf of the whole Celebration Committee. Um, following the Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Celebration last April, some very passionate and dedicated Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Committee members. Uh, led by members of the Palo Alto History Museum and Palo Alto Historical Association. Uh, worked on ways to record and memorialize that special day and to put together legacy items for the time capsule. Which will be refilled for opening on Palo Alto's Two Hundredth Birthday in. Where your math majors out there, I think twenty-nine before. And we will seal it up and hide it away someday after we're allowed to gather together again. One very special group that stepped up to help is the History Museum Teen Council that you'll hear from in just a moment. As all events and gatherings are out of the question now, this also means we can't celebrate the Second Annual Palo Alto Day. When our community comes together around what we love about Palo Alto. And is to be celebrated each year around April twenty-third, the date of Palo Alto's incorporation. One of a few dates that we think were the date that Palo Alto was incorporated, but that's the one I found on the city charter. So instead this year, instead of an event, we have chosen a theme of personal action for everyone to focus on, which is Palo Alto Proud. The focus of this year's Palo Alto Day is to appreciate and acknowledge how we are coming together to support each other, from neighborhood heroes to our emergency service volunteers, to restaurants donating meals to our hospital workers, to grocery store workers keeping us supplied, to donations being made to nonprofits so they can continue to service those in need, to our fabulous city staff who are working under very challenging circumstances, the rainbows in the windows and chalk drawings on empty streets in honor of our first responders, and the latest initiative launched by the Chamber of Commerce of Takeout Tuesday to support our restaurants beginning tomorrow. All these gestures show us how Palo Alto residents and businesses come together when we're all in this together in small and big ways. So the best way to celebrate Palo Alto Day this year is to keep helping each other and do those generous acts of kindness that make us all Palo Alto proud. And now I'd like you to hear from one of our teen heroes, Annie Reynolds, one of the leaders of the History Museum Teen Council, which has worked very hard on the time capsule and has also created a special activity for teens. Thank you.
Annie, go ahead and speak.
Hi, everyone. I am Annie Reynolds, and I'm the leader of the Palo Alto Museum Teen Advisory Council, which also works with other local history organizations. Over the course of this school year, we've been working on a time capsule that was supposed to be closed at this year's Palo Alto Day. So instead of being able to do that, we are now presented with the opportunity of continuing to collect items that really represent this historical moment in time. One of the ways we're doing that, as well as trying to bring the community together while we're physically apart, is through a set of what we're calling Corona Challenges. So these are for students of all ages in Palo Alto, and they focus on history and science in partnership with the Junior Museum and Zoo with an idea of the local community. We want to celebrate the end products on social media and also by including some of them in the time capsule. So to learn more about what we're doing right now, I've created a link that will give you a place to find both the challenges, our new Instagram account, and a survey for longtime and involved residents such as a city council member. And that can be found at tinyurl.com/teencouncil2020links. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. We have one more speaker, Charlie Weidens.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to speak briefly to you tonight and let you know about Takeout Tuesday. With our mission to promote a healthy community and serve as the advocate and voice of businesses, especially during this very challenging time, the Chamber is launching Takeout Tuesday as part of our Think Big, Shop Small campaign to encourage and support our local restaurants by ordering prepared food for takeout or delivery. By participating in Takeout Tuesday, it's a great way for our residents to support their favorite restaurants, many of which are struggling to maintain a successful level business, provide healthy and safe food for our residents, and keep as many of the restaurant workers employed as possible. These are workers who really depend on their jobs to support their own families. And in addition, many of these local restaurants are providing free meals to the local hospitals and staff members. So Takeout Tuesday, or any day of the week, is a great way to say thank you to our restaurant owners and workers and help them stay in business while we shelter in place. We also encourage you to purchase gift cards for your favorite restaurant as another way to provide the much-needed support. So join us tomorrow for our first Takeout Tuesday and continue to think big and shop small. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weidens. Mayor, there's no further speakers.
Thank you, Beth, and thank you, everyone, for speaking up. I'll just say, when we adjourn this meeting, let's adjourn it in honor of Earth Day and Palo Alto's birthday, whether it's last week or this coming week, point of contention. Okay, let's move on to the minutes approval, and I will move the minutes for April 6th.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Do we have any comments or speakers in the minutes? Don't see anything. Okay, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Councilmember Niss. Liz, you're on mute. Still on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
And Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that passes seven to nothing. And now we have our consent calendar, items five through nine, minus number eight. Any, I see a hand from Councilmember Tanaka.
No on five.
Okay.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion from the Vice Mayor to move the consent calendar, minus number eight, and seconded by Councilmember Niss. If there are no other comments, let's do our roll call. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Councilmember. Yes. Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Thank you. So that passes seven to nothing with item number eight moved out, and Councilmember Tanaka voting no on five. Councilmember Tanaka, if you want to speak to your no vote.
Sure. So I think five is actually a critical service, so I do support it, because I think it's actually really important. But my big issue with it is, it's a very big contract. It's $5.6 million. This was negotiated before COVID-19. There's only one bid on this. And I've been talking to my colleagues in other cities, and services like this have been renegotiated. So a lot of cities all around us are cutting back, like they're having 10, 15% plus top revenue drop. And so they're going back to all their contracts renegotiating. This is a big contract. We're $21 in the hole at least for this quarter, and we'll probably be even more so next year. And to me, it would be prudent for us to actually, especially for large contracts like this, to put them out again. And we'll be surprised if, I think we'll get much more competitive bids than we have now. And I think this is, doing things like this is actually really important, given the kind of economic situation the cities in. This will allow us to provide more services for our residents and get more value for our dollar. So, yeah, that's why I put no on this one.
Okay, thank you. City manager comments. Mr. Chikata.
Ready to go.
You're on mute.
Thank you, and I was so eloquent. So excuse me for that. No formal comments. I would just like to note for the record that on, I neglected to mention earlier that item number five on your agenda this evening is actually an example of the kinds of ingenuity that Palo Alto has done over the course of years. It's really a result of the last recession, that this contract, which had previously been done in-house with staff, that this service has been outsourced and bid. And really, credit to staff for the structure of this agreement. In fact, the compensation is on a per-mile-served basis, so that it is scalable. The council may discuss, and we may bring forward to you some options for changing the frequency of service to reflect any scaling that's necessary based on our fiscal constraints. But again, really want to acknowledge and compliment our staff for putting this together. So with that, no other comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, we now move to councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Please hit the hand button if you have anything to share. Only thing I'll share is that Caltrans LPMG Group has canceled a number of meetings. The May meeting may be online, but if you go to Caltrans LPMG, you can see a digital update about the electrification stuff. Okay, I don't see any hands. So with that, it is 10:32, and we're going to adjourn this meeting in the spirit of Earth Day and Palo Alto's birthday. Thank you, everyone, so much for a long but productive meeting. Thanks, all.
Thanks, everybody.